Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the West Orange Planning Board Meeting Wednesday, May 5th, 2024, 7:30 PM. Notice that this meeting was given to the township clerk, and posted on township bulletin board and township website calendar, and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noted to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start after 10:30 PM. May I ask everybody to rise to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated.
The next regular planning board meeting will be held June 5th, 2024, 7:30 PM via Zoom. A roll call, please, Yamalat.
Mr. Alpert? Mr. Cardoza?
Present.
Skafer?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mrs. Smaraldo?
Yeah.
Mr. Wooks?
Here.
Mayor McCartney?
Present.
Mr. Guerino?
Present.
Chairman Bagow?
Here. Thank you.
Just for the record, Mr. Morgan and Council President are out today.
Thank you, Yamalat. We have the April 17, 2024 draft minutes. Does anybody have any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, I make a motion that we adopt the April 17, 2024 Planning Board Minutes. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Garino, seconds on the motion, Yamalat.
Mr. Alpert? Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan? Oh, sorry. Mrs. Maraldo?
Yes.
Mr. Wooks?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Miss Skafer?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Guerino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagow?
Yes. Motion passed. The minutes are adopted. We have the draft resolution, PB 24-07 SS County Country Club, with conditions. I make a motion that we approve PB 24-07 SS County Country Club with conditions. Do I have a second? Mr. Smaraldo, seconds on the motion, Yamalat.
Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mrs. Maraldo?
Yes.
Mr. Wooks?
Yes.
Yes.
Miss Skafer?
Yes.
Guerino?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. There was a little background noise.
There's a lot of background noise. Does somebody have on a TV or a radio? Still hearing a lot of background noise.
It looks like it was Mayor McCartney.
Okay. There you go. Thank you.
Chairman Bagow.
Yes. Motion carries resolutions adopted. Thank you. Ms. McGovern, would you swear in the township professionals, please?
Yes, we have Mr. Hess as our consulting engineer and Mr. Hazel as our consulting planner. If you please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Hazel, welcome to the planning board.
Thank you.
Applications before us this evening, PB 23-12 LNB Realty Group LLC Block 62 Lot 1, 106 Ashland Avenue. The applicant is proposing to renovate and replace the existing industrial buildings and undertake related site improvements on a developed property in the industrial zone. Certainty and bulk variances are required to permit the proposal, and there will be testimony why we should consider that for the applicant.
Richard Skolnick.
Mr. Skolnick, welcome.
Thank you.
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. As you mentioned, I'm representing LNB Realty Group. This is an application for site plan approval with what we believe to be some relatively minor variances. The addresses are 106 Ashland Avenue and 5 White Street. We're identified as Block 62, Lot 1 on the tax maps, and as you mentioned, there's three existing buildings out there. Very cleverly, we've named them buildings A, B, and C. The principal of my client is Frank Ench. He and his family have a long history on Ashland Avenue. He had rented in this facility for about eight years, and a few months ago, he purchased the property. The core part of the site plan application is to raise most of existing building A, reconstruct it, and slightly expand that building. It is a seriously deteriorated building at the moment, and this is going to add about 1,355 square feet of warehouse space. When we take all the space together, the proposal before you is just for an additional 1,355 square feet. That building A also has a small office. We're seeking a deviation from the side yard setback. There's a 10-foot requirement. The existing building is just off the property line. We're going to be making the building a little taller. We still meet the height requirement of the I-zone, but because we're in the setback and we're going up a bit, we need a deviation on the side yard setback. Fortunately, Mr. Ench owns the building right next door, so the only detriment or direct detriment is to a property that Mr. Ench himself owns. With the 1,355 square feet of new warehouse space, that would require a need for about two new parking spaces. Right now, there's a very informal parking situation with about 15 spaces. We're going to clean that up and rationalize the parking, and we're going to go from 15 to 25. So we're adding 10 new spaces. Eight are going to be inside of the building and 17 spaces outside. So net 10 new spaces, the increase in square footage would require two new spaces. So we're closer to compliance by eight spaces on that basis. We're also eliminating about 5,500 square feet of interior office space and turning that into warehouse space. And since the requirement for warehouse space is one per 600, and for office it's one per 250, that change from office to warehouse also lowers the parking requirements. We did submit a supplemental exhibit today. Mr. Hess asked us to clean up and clarify the parking situation. We thank him for that, and we've endeavored to do that. So in terms of the parking overall, there's what we believe to be a reduction in the nonconformity. As you mentioned, I believe, we're in the I-industrial zone, and this is the place in town where warehousing and storage yards are permitted. There's really no change in the use because Mr. Ench has been a tenant for eight years, and now he's just, he took over ownership, and he's going to continue to operate his business there. We're adding some charging stations. We're adding some landscaping. We attended the SPRA meeting, and we made revisions to the plans. Chairman, in terms of our lineup, I'm going to have brief testimony for Mr. Ench. Should be no more than five minutes. We have Mr. Marucci as our civil engineer and planner. I think our testimony is going to be about a half an hour or so. If you need him, if you need him, we have Greg Samjin, the project architect. So with that, Chairman, I'm ready to get started.
Go for it, sir.
Okay, we're going to call Frank Ench. I believe he was allowed into the Zoom. He had a lot of trouble. He's in? Okay, I see him. Okay, if we could have him.
Okay, I see him now, too. Mr. Ench, if you'd please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? You have to take yourself off mute, sir.
He is off mute?
He is off mute, but did you hear him? Because I couldn't hear him.
Mr. Ench, your speaker, your microphone's not working.
I heard him a second ago, though.
Can you try it again?
Maybe you turn your volume down?
Nope.
No, sir.
Okay, why don't we try to resolve that, Chairman, and we'll go on to Mr. Marucci.
Wait, Ms. McGovern, can he just shake his head yes, so we don't have to?
Yeah, but then you can't hear his testimony if you can't hear.
But we'll come back to him at least.
Now he's swearing in. Now I can see he's muted.
Okay, you're muted, Mr. Ench. You're muted. You're getting closer.
Frank, unmute and raise your volume.
That's weird.
Is that good? Can you say something, sir?
Go out and come back in.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, okay, Mr. Skolnick, let's move on, and we'll come back to Mr. Ench.
Fair enough.
He doesn't know what to do.
Yeah, Frank, you're going to have to go out, and they're going to let you try to come back in. We're going to try Mr. Marucci. We're going to have an audible here.
Okay. Can I go to swear in Mr. Marucci?
Yes, please.
Mr. Marucci, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
We can hear you, yes.
Okay. Mr. Marucci, can you provide your professional qualifications as both a civil engineer and a planner?
Of course. I received my bachelor's degree in civil engineering in 1973, and I received my professional engineer's license in 1979. I'm sorry, it's 1978. My planner's license in 1979, and my land surveyor's license in 1981. For the first 28 years of my experience, I served the municipal government, serving as the assistant municipal engineer for the city of Orange. Two years with the village of South Orange, I returned to be the city engineer for Orange for two years. At my final 13 years, I served as a township engineer for the township of Bloomfield. In 2001, and up to the current date, I formed my own company. So for the last 22 years, I provide services to both municipalities and also to private clients. As far as municipalities, I serve as the planning board and zoning board engineer for the township of Bloomfield continuously.
Okay, Mr. Marucci. I think we're good. Is your license current and in good standing?
All my licenses are current. I only.
That's all I need to know.
Because there's some members that I don't know.
Unless anybody has a question, Mr. Marucci is well-known to the board, and he's testified before us before. Mr. Marucci, you have the floor, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Marucci, you want to share your screen, give us a little overview, and then we'll go over a couple of the notes in Mr. Hess's review letter?
Yes. Chairman and members of the board, we prepared the site plans that are before you this evening, and I'm sharing with you. The plan was revised on February 23rd of this year, based on the technical review that we had back in January. Revised the plan, and we took into account the recommendations of the board, the board's planner, and also the board's engineer. Sheet one is the basics with the site location with a 200-foot radius and zoning information, et cetera. I'd like to go right into sheet two, which is the existing conditions. Sheet two is the existing condition. As Mr. Skolnick mentioned, the property has an unusual shape. It fronts on Ashland Avenue. It has 100-foot frontage on Ashland Avenue, and it also has, I believe, 60 feet of frontage on, I'm sorry, 40 feet of frontage on White Street, and it consists of three buildings. You have the building on White Street, and on Ashland Avenue, you have the long building that is really what's in consideration this evening, and a smaller building in the rear, which is newer. Actually, I did that site plan for that building in the back many years ago. That's a fairly new building. The front building, we're trying to, we're going to salvage the part in the front as an office, and the rest of the building is going to be removed and replaced with a new building. One thing I want to mention while I'm on the existing conditions is the township has a storm sewer culvert. You see it highlighted. It traverses the property almost through the middle of the property, and it makes an angle, and it flows northbound. This culvert has been there since 1935. The culvert is eight foot wide by three foot deep. It carries drainage probably from Main Street all through Ashland Avenue, and it takes, and it continues. It follows the rear property line of the properties on Ashland Avenue. It goes under Park Avenue, and then it's exposed. Once it goes to the north of Park Avenue, it's an open brook. It's actually called Wigwan Brook, and it flows in between the gas station to the west and Congdon Lumber to the east. It's right in the middle there. I just wanted to make that clear because I'll be talking about that in my presentation. The next sheet, sheet three, is the actual site plan. They stated before the front portion of the building will remain, and there's a reason for that. This part of the building contains the utilities that service the building, and especially the electric. There's a lot of power going into this building. All the utilities go through there. But then the rest of the building will be removed and replaced as we show on the site plan. Both in the existing condition and in the proposed condition, the building has a setback in the front, a side yard setback in the front of 1.3 feet, and at the rear of the building, you'll see it's 2.1 feet. When Mr. Ench asked us to do this application, we had a restriction, again, with that culvert. In the ordinance, in the industrial zone, we could have actually built this building right against the side property line, except there's a provision in the ordinance that says if you're next to a residence, if the residence is not conforming, you need a 10-foot side yard. We can't, if we had a 10-foot side yard, we would be right into the culvert. So whether it was the, whether the existing building in the same footprint or the new building, it would be into the culvert. So I think that's important. I get into the planning testimony as to why we're building on the same footprint of the side yard. With respect to building C, the we're adding, right now, there's only a pedestrian door there on White Street. We're adding an overhead door so that we can add two parking spaces within that part of the building. I know Mr. Ench hasn't testified yet. As Mr. Skolnick stated, he has been a tenant of this property since 2015, and he was able to purchase the property and make these improvements that I believe are really necessary because the property right now, the parking lot is in a state of disrepair, and the building that we're proposing to replace is also in a state of disrepair. Mr. Ench is looking to put his office and his office personnel, which consists of his office manager and a secretary, within the office in building C, and they would access the office through that garage door that's being proposed. So two parking spaces would be in there, and again, the reason for that is also for safety. So those employees are in there, the doors closed, and they're provided safety and security. Building B in the back is a two-story. The first floor is actually a garage. It's a three-car garage, and the second floor is storage warehouse. Building A that's being proposed, it has three overhead doors also, and so that's another three parking spaces. So we have eight interior parking spaces proposed and 17 parking spaces along the southerly property line, and based on the technical review, we added an EV station. Actually, it's a double EV station, one for a regular vehicle and one for the handicap parking space. Again, those were recommendations. Let me go into the next sheet, which is the drainage and grading and drainage. And I want to emphasize the fact that in terms of impervious coverage in the existing condition, the building, it's all building and pavement, so it's 100% impervious coverage. In the proposed condition, it's exactly the same except that the building's a little bigger. So with respect to drainage, there is no increase in runoff. I know that when I get into Mr. Hess's report, they ask for drainage calculations, but there is no increase in stormwater runoff. However, what we are doing is making it better. There's an existing catch basin towards the rear that ties into the culvert. And with this new building, we're adding pipes, piping, and catch basins so that we capture the water from the roof. And again, the only purpose of that is to make it better so we don't have sheet flow across the parking lot. And this way, all the water is underground, so we're actually making it better. In the front of the building, we were asked to slightly move the fence back a little and provide some landscaping, and also to remove there, in the existing condition, there was a lot of signage that was actually mounted right on the fence. That's all being removed, and we're putting some landscaping in the front. So in my opinion, what we're doing is we're making this property better in terms of usability, functionality, appearance, and with the landscape in a better visual environment.
Mr. Marucci.
Richard, you want me to get into the, you want me to get into the reports?
Yeah, let's just cover, we added the pedestrian warning system and some mirrors. Can you talk about that?
Well, that, okay, that's all, it's in the reports. One of the, one of the items that was mentioned at the technical review was because the building is basically right on the right-of-way on White Street. There was a concern about vehicles backing out. Again, I want to emphasize that these spaces are for the office personnel. They go in in the morning, and they basically leave at the end of the day. So there is no activity going in and out of here during the day. But what we agreed to was to both put a warning device for when vehicles have to exit, and also in Mr. Hess's report, they recommend mirrors. So we're going to put both those improvements in for safety.
Okay, and we have Mr. Hess's March 25th report. I'm going to try to take you through the main points of this pretty quickly, and then I'm sure Mr. Hess will pick up anything. Chairman, we'll have some testimony from Mr. Ench on the hours of operations, but I'll proffer that's going to be from 7:00 to 4:30. I'm on page three. Page three of Mr. Hess's March 25th report. We don't have any problems with adding any of the details and the cleanup in Mr. Hess's letter, of course, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, we have comment number six on page three. He talked about the trash enclosure. What did you decide to do with that?
Two things to the board. In the rear of the, in the rear of the property, you see the ramp that, there's a ramp that goes into building C. Behind that ramp, Mr. Ench will have a container back there for all of his waste. Let me just backtrack. Mr. Ench hasn't testified yet. He is in the roofing business. That goes on here. So he stores a lot of materials for his work. Obviously, the work is done off-site, but he stores his materials here in the building. So any waste material goes into the container, and it's taken out as the containers are filled, and that's all done commercially. With respect to household garbage or refuse, there's very little. Again, you have the office that has two employees in there, so whatever little household refuse there is will be put out of the curb, just like every other resident does on the street and gets picked up by the town.
Okay, and well, of course, in a hope for compliance set of plans, add the details on the trash enclosure, correct?
Yes, yes.
We can do that. Okay, comment seven was the details about the EV charging stations, and of course, we can add some more details to satisfy Mr. Hess. I'm going to skip number eight and have Frank talk about potential subtenants. None are planned at the moment. Number nine is the parking, which I referred to. You prepared an exhibit, which we submitted and has posted on the website that clarifies. But let's just go through the parking again, you know, what's out there now, and how we sort of rationalized the parking and cleaned it up, and how you did the calculation, just from a high-level perspective.
My first comment is that unfortunately, on my site plans, we did not have the accurate areas with respect to offices and commercials. So what we did was we conferred with the architect, and we agreed, these are the numbers that I showed on my exhibit that is actually dated today. But I just want to start out by saying that in the existing condition, there are only about 15 parking spaces today, and it's operated this way for years, even when Frank, when Mr. Ench was a tenant. And it's not striped. It's very haphazard. In the existing condition, as I show in my exhibit, building A has 700 square feet of office, 4,277 square feet of warehouse. Building B in the back has, in the first floor, 1,235 square feet.
Anthony, Anthony, I don't think you have to go over every number. You don't have to go over every number.
I want to be, I want to be clear that what happened is that in the existing condition, we would need 50 parking spaces. But in the proposed condition, we only need 35. We are proposing 25, so we do have a deficit of 10 spaces. But in terms of what's being increased in terms of the building, as Mr. Skolnick stated, it's only 1,355 square feet of new space coming in. So technically, that's two parking spaces. But in my planning testimony, I'll explain the variance relief for the park.
Okay, we're going to get to that very shortly. Okay, on page four of Mr. Hess's letter, he has a series of comments in terms of some details. Do you have any issues with complying with anything there?
We can comply.
Okay, item number 14, he mentions emergency vehicles. Is there any change in emergency access from what's out there today?
Quite frankly, there is no change in, in my opinion, and I've been involved with the municipal government for many years, a fire truck is not going to go into this site if, God forbid, if there's a fire. In any event, an emergency vehicle will go in, will not turn around. They'll go in and back right out to Ashland Avenue. So I'm not concerned about emergency vehicles here.
Okay, item number 18, 19, and 20 deal with fence and gate details. More details on the resurfacing and some clarity on the boxwoods and the plantings. Obviously, no problems there.
We will comply.
Okay, item number 21 is again. Okay, item number, uh, twenty-one is again with the boxwoods. You're okay there?
Yes.
Okay, item twenty-two was, um, dealing with the storm sewer right away and. We provided both the township engineer and Mr. Hess with the, with the full documents on that, uh, the, uh, on the recorded map.
I have the recorded easement that again goes back to nineteen thirty. Five in our survey, uh, that shows the, the easement is based on, on that. Information and provided that to both the township engineer, Ms. Carvalho, and also to Mr. Has in an email dated February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, and items twenty-three and twenty-four deal with the storm drainage. I, I take it it's your opinion that, um. We really should not be required to have to do a stormwater analysis. Uh, and report, which is a cost generative item, uh, because we're not adding any increased, uh, impervious surface area. Is that correct?
As I stated from, from the, the beginning. Uh, uh, the impervious coverage doesn't change. We're actually making the drainage system better with what we're proposing. Without increasing runoff.
Okay, and Chairman, is it okay if we, we give the planning testimony now? Uh, it's gonna be relatively brief. I thought I'd go into it and then we'll pick up the questions after. Is that okay?
Makes sense.
Okay, Anthony, so there's, there's two variances. The first has to do with the, the setback on the left side. We talked about that. Uh, we talked about the fact that Mr. N. Jones, the building, uh, to the left, uh, do, do you have, uh, some comments? Uh, on that C variance in terms of the positive and negative criteria?
With respect to the. The side yard, uh, as I stated, the, uh, i- if, if there was no residents to the. North of this, of the subject property, we would be able to build right up against the property line. The ordinance says that when you're next to a residence, we need to maintain ten feet. In the existing condition, as I stated, we're at one point three in the front, two point one at the rear of the building. And the, um. The design is to stay within that same side yard setback. Because if we had to maintain ten feet, we would be into the covert, as you can see on the site plan. And, um. I believe that's actually a hardship. That will really come under the C one as a hardship, but I also, um, would. Provide and see two ben- uh, where the benefits, uh, outweigh the detriments. Uh, because we're replacing a deteriorated building and improving the site with that new building. Um. I'd like to get into the parking next before I get into the actual.
Okay, any, any impact on the master plan in terms of the detriments here?
No.
Not really a master plan type issue. And, and I just, uh, one last question on the detriments here. It's Frank's property, so he's the one, you know, facing the immediate issue. Right? His, his adjacent property.
I was gonna get, I'm gonna get into, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get into the negative criteria for both the, the side yard setback. Back and the parking at the same time. Um, with respect, with respect to the parking as, as. As I presented, I exhibit, technically, we need thirty-five spaces. This site is. Rated with fifteen parking spaces. We are now proposing twenty-five. And I know that Mr. Ench hasn't, um, testified yet, but in our conversations. In his roofing business, he employs twelve people, twelve employees and the two office staff. So. That tells you right there that in terms of parking. He only requires fourteen spaces for his use. Visitors don't come to the site. This is a, 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 uh, a roofing business that again. Um, is, is for warehousing. The jobs are offsite. They, they do commercial buildings, um. And residential buildings in terms of roofing, but no one comes to the site. It's only his, his employees. So. In terms of the number of employees. We have more than enough parking that's required. Yes, there may be another tenant there, but. In my opinion, we have sufficient parking. He also utilizes those garages as double. In other words. In the evenings, the trucks are parked in the garages, but during the day, when the trucks go out, the employees can park in the garage. So there's like a double. Use of those garages. Um. So in my opinion, I believe the number of spaces is adequate for the operation. And again, his operation ends at four thirty, so there is no. Uh, effect on, on any parking on Ashland Avenue with, with this, uh, operation. With respect to the negative criteria for both the side yard variance and the parking. In my opinion, there's no substantial detriment to the public good. This is a complete upgrade of the property with the new building and also with the parking and the landscaping. Also, in my opinion, there's no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan or the zoning ordinance. It is a permitted use. The adjacent uses are the ones that are non-conforming. With re- with respect to, um, the municipal land use law, in my opinion, purpose A is promoted. Which is for safety and the general welfare. So. Improving this property improve, improves the general welfare and improves safety for the employees that are gonna be in the office. Purpose I is also promoted because we're gonna provide a more desirable visual. Environment with the new building, the new pavement and landscaping in the front.
Okay, anything else?
Yes, that's it, Mr. That, that's it, Mr. Skolnick.
Okay, we appreciate it. I think we heard some noise from Mr. Ench, so maybe he'll be okay. Okay, Chairman, I, I, I think, uh, that concludes. We're certainly available to. Uh, talk more about any issues that, uh, the board or the public or your professionals have.
Okay, great. Let's go through the board. Vice Chairman Garina, do you have any, uh, questions?
Yeah, yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I do. One, um. Associate employee egress and entrance to the building. I notice you're talking about building C is only the roll-up door as an entrance and exit for. People working in that building. Are there any other emergency exits for the staff to get out of the building?
Yes, they go, the, the building is connected right to the back. It, it, the warehousing is all. Connected, so yes, there is access to come out into the rear of the property where the ramp is, where, where. I explained the, uh, ramp getting into the warehouse portion. I'm sorry.
No, so that in building C, that's connected to the other building?
No.
Buildings, the office is, is within building C.
Right, so when there's, when there have staff in the building, they come in through the front roll-up doors here. How do they get out if you can't get out that door?
There's a, there's a pedestrian door. There's a, there's a man door next to the, uh. And existing man door next to, that's existing now.
Okay, so Mr. Marucci, so, but say for example, these exits, these, you know, uh, portals are blocked. And staff can't get to through either one. Is there any other exit out of this building?
Yes, sir, they can go through the warehouse. That's all connected. That's one building.
Alright, okay, so they have to go. Okay, that's all I wanted to know, because I didn't see anything on here. So they can go through the other part of the building. Okay. That's understandable. Second question.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, sir. The other, the other question I have is, the building that you're taking down. Has that been inspected for any asbestos materials that are currently in that building?
I would have to defer to Mr. Ench. I, I don't know, but if there is, that's part of the demolition process through your construction officials, so that would. Have to be taken care of at that time.
Okay, alright, that's good to sell us. That's Mr. Ench and everything else in the last question. And I don't think there's any brownfield issues with this property, is there?
I, I get, I, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Ench because. There were some environmental issues that he has to take care of and, and I have to defer to Mr. Ench on that.
Okay, Mr. Marucci, thank you very much for your time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garino. Uh, Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions for Mr. Marucci on his testimonies?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. I had my hand up early on when Mr. Skolnick was speaking about, um. Actually, Mr. Marucci answered the question about if this was going to continue at a roofing business, because I understand there was a question about would there be any sub. Tenants in this building. Uh, I do appreciate the testimony that I heard that there were be. Electric charging stations and storm order regulations and adding landscaping. My question is, I, and maybe this is because of the application we previously heard. Is there, is all of the ingress and egress going to be on Ashland Avenue? Is there any. Accessibility to White Street or Park Avenue from this site?
No, well, no, Park Avenue, no, the, the site does not. Uh, front. No, uh, and, and, and you can't really. Access with a vehicle through building C. I mean, there's a ramp there. Where Mr. Edge, uh, uses a, uh, a forklift to, to bring materials in there, but. Uh, there's no access for vehicles to go out the White Street. That's why he's proposing the overhead door to provide two more parking. Spaces for his employees, for his office staff, uh, on White Street. So the only access really is from Ashland Avenue.
Excuse me, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hey, yes, Frank, thanks.
Oh, you have no idea how I was panicking the last fifteen minutes listening, everybody.
So welcome.
I could put my right hand up again. Not yet, not yet, Frank. Hold on.
You're welcome. So, and the question about subtenants, will there be any subtenants in that building?
Uh, as of right now, no. I'm, I'm looking at it right now, we're gonna expand the businesses as, um, you know, because business is, is doing well right now for storage. And be able to load one of my, my bigger trucks to put into the building. Um, Brian, hold on. Brian, hold on, we gotta swear yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Board attorney's gonna swear yeah. We know you're.
Thank you.
Just kind of going out of order.
Okay, guys, let's finish.
Was responding to the question, thank you.
Yeah, yes, okay, hang on to Mayor. Let's finish with Mr. Marucci. Mr. Ench, we're gonna come to you when Mr. Marucci is done, if that's okay with you, Mr. Skolnick.
Uh, a hundred percent.
Outstanding. Go ahead, Mayor McCartney.
No, I was done. Thank you. My question was about ingress and egress on Ashland Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alper.
Sure, um, just to clarify, the E V stalls, are they, um, gonna be active and, you know, in use when, or are they make ready that will eventually be in use?
Well, d- during the technical, um, meeting, the. The, uh, it was recommended that we apply or install the E V station, so it, it will. It will be available.
With the ordinance, we'll, I think you have to put one in use on the, on the state statute, but we'll, we'll check.
Good enough. And my other question is, is there any possibility in an attempt to, uh, lower the impervious coverage and, uh, decrease the, uh, good old heat island effect? Of putting the green roof on the new warehouse building?
Well, uh, we'll ask Mr. Ench that if you, I'll, I'll, I'll mark that since he's a roofer.
Uh, I, I do have to defer to Mr. Ench.
Good point, Mr. Skolnick.
Alright, those were my questions.
You don't usually get that.
M- Mr. Wilks?
No, no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Mr. Moraldo?
Uh, just a couple of the, uh, fire-related questions. Um, so the buildings, there were the, the. Uh, addition of the seventeen hundred thirty feet, um, is there currently any fire suppression systems or fire alarm systems in the building?
I, I, um. I, I, I will have to defer to Mr. Ench. I, I don't know if it's required to have a.
Well, that was gonna be my. If it's not, if it's not there, does this trigger the retrofit in any way?
Well, again, that would be a, a, a question for the architect.
Okay, alright, that's what, that's the only thing I wanted to ask you. So I, um, other than that, I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moraldo. Mr. Cardoza?
No questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cardoza. Ms. Cafr.
Uh, just a couple of questions, um. Did you say, uh, that trash collection would be kind of at the rear of the property? And if so, do you have, um, did you do any truck turning movements? Um, in the back for, for the trash trucks?
It, it's, it's really not trash removal. Uh, again, my conversation with Mr. Ench, he'll have a container back there for any. Materials that he brings back from a job site. And when the container is full, it will be taken out with a roll-off truck. I, I believe the roll-off truck would just back into the site and. I don't know how often that would be. And again, that, that really is a question for Mr. Ench, um, because that's an operational question.
Right. Great, thank you. And then, um, just a couple of questions about the drainage. Um, can you share how the, um, it, it looked like there was an existing inlet that connects to the covert? Is that, can you comment on the pipe size that, I'm assuming it's a pipe that's connected there? Yeah.
It's a twelve-inch pipe and, uh, that, right now, in the existing condition, that's the. Only inlet that helps drain the site, and that's why we want to make it better. By adding the other inlets. And again, it's the, uh, to re- to reduce any. Surface flow and get everything piped into the, uh, into the system.
Yeah, that's great. And then one more question about that, uh, is the covert, like during extreme events, do you have any idea what the capacity is? Like, you know, have there been flooding issues due to? The covert, the existing covert being full?
To the best of my knowledge, not because of the covert being. In full, but that single catch basin wasn't enough, but that's why we're adding the. The additional catch basins. I've actually had conversations with the, uh, uh, sewer supervisor. His name is, uh, Joe Elefani and. Uh, he has been in town for many years and he hasn't, he, based on our conversations, he's never had any issue with this. Or with this portion of, of the covert.
Alright, that's it for my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cafr. Uh, Mr. Hess, do you have any questions?
Just, uh, one question, Mr. Chairman. The, uh, during the sprab meeting, as I recall, there was a question raised about the. Structural integrity of the box covert. Um, would the applicant be willing to perform a, a video inspection just? To confirm that it's in good shape?
We, we did discuss that and, um. I believe that, that Mr. Ench, I, I will defer to him, but I believe that Mr. Ench did have someone try. To do it. However, there was so much rain at the time that they couldn't get in there. But, uh, we did make that, uh, we did make that agreement back at the sprag. Meeting, so the answer is yes, we will do that.
Can you just, what was that? A video of what?
Of the, uh, of the.
The storm.
Okay.
And, and that's all my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions for this?
No, I do not at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hazel. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Marucci on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Marucci on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any yet.
Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Marucci.
Thank you.
Skolnick, you're up.
We're gonna call the architect just to clean up that question, if I can, Greg Samjin, if I could get him sworn.
Okay.
Uh, yes, Mr. Sanjin, I can't find you on this screen.
I'm in the cube in the upper left-hand corner.
Oh, okay, thank you. You're not. You're in a different place of mine, but that's okay. Now you spoke, you got, I.
Part of the Brady Bunch, I'm okay.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sanjin, very briefly, can you provide your professional qualifications? Fortunately for you, I'm not as old as Mr. Marucci. Um, I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey and many other states. Started my own firm thirty-five years ago. I've been practicing various forms of architecture for those decades. How's that?
Is your license active in the state of New Jersey, sir?
My license is active in the state of New Jersey and in good standing.
Thank you, then. We accept you. Unless anybody has any questions, we accept Mr. Samjin as the architect for the site. Go right ahead, sir.
Greg, you heard the question about whether there's any existing fire suppression and whether, uh, what's proposed. Uh, invokes some retrofit standards. Do, do you have the response to that? So, um, my answer is I'm not sure if there are any in the building today. Obviously, as part of our next phase, following approval through the planning. Obviously, as part of our next phase, following approval through the planning board, we would prepare the necessary drawings that would meet the Uniform Construction Code, uh, in this case, the Rehabilitation Code or the new construction code, um, we haven't done that analysis yet because obviously the approval was pending, but of course, the building department will require the appropriate fire, uh, related measures, whether that is sprinkler system or whether that is a fire alarm system within the building, and obviously we will be complying. Chairman, that's all I have for Mr. Samjin.
Great.
That's a thank you for me, thank you.
Do any members of the board have any questions about Mr. Samjin's testimony? Seeing none, Mr. Hes, do you have any questions for, about Mr. Samjin's testimony?
I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hes, Mr. Hazel, do you have any question about Mr. Samjin's testimony?
I do not, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hazel, do any members of the public have any questions about Mr. Samjin's testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions about Mr. Samjin's testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Not seeing any.
Seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Samjin. Mr. Skolnick, you have the floor, sir.
Okay, we're gonna call Frank Ench.
Okay, we're gonna swear yeah again, this time out loud, Mr. Ench. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Great, we can hear you too, that's good.
Okay, Frank, I'm gonna sort of go in the order that we had planned, and we'll pick up those questions about, uh, asbestos and, and the green roof. Uh, so, uh, your family has some history on this block, I understand? Yes, I was born and raised in West Orange on Swain Place. I went to West Orange High School, graduated nineteen eighty-three. I basically, my father's business, SJ Corney Roofing and Maintenance, has been on Ashland Avenue. Uh, I believe for over seventy years. Uh, so I basically grew up on Ashland Avenue, playing Little League Baseball and football in Lafayette Playground. The, 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 the house is named after my father, Frank Boench Fieldhouse. Uh, we own, uh, six, two six families on Ashland Avenue. And I basically spent my whole life there, and then I moved into the building in two thousand fifteen. Mrs. Travala rented the building C to me. Uh, building B was her building for her, uh, her and Frank's, her deceased husband's antique cars. So I, I do have an antique green pickup truck for all of yous that know me, for being in the parade over the years, that is in there, but that is it. The building A that we're proposing to build to, uh, make a warehouse has been vacant from before I took, uh, became, uh, a resident of rental on the property. Uh, it is gutted right now, and I believe all the utilities are, are turned off at the street or inside the building, uh, that's pretty much it. Uh, Frank, your hours of operation, uh, you told me seven to four thirty, is that accurate? That's correct, unless the guys are traveling to return sometimes up to five thirty, but the trucks go in, we are locking the gate at night in the shop. Okay, and Anthony said there's gonna be no change since you've been, uh, leasing the property until you made the purchase a few months ago. You, uh, you store the materials in trucks for your roofing business. That is correct. Okay, um, and, um, let's just go through those items, are you aware of any asbestos? I know we're gonna have to go through this, you know, for when we get the building permits, but are you aware of asbestos out there? No, not at this time, no. Okay, and of course, whatever testing you may have to do to get the building permits, we would do that in the next phase. Correct. Um, there was a question about the environmental status, is you hired a lawyer, I take it, when you purchased the building and, and, and you've done? We are, we are in, ongoing with, um, environmental services, working with the previous owner um, to get testing done and to, you know, to see what's happening, it can be, uh, uh, we're waiting for the results to see what we would have steps, we would have to, uh, move forward to, to, uh, make the site up to code. Okay, and did you hire, uh, a licensed, uh, LSRP? Yes. License remediation, so somebody's on and we're, we're happy to, uh, share whatever we need to with the municipality on that? Absolutely, I have a contract with a guy, I do not have it in front of me, I could provide it at any time you would like. Okay, and there's a question about your, your intent with having tenants, what, what's, what, what are you thinking about right now? As of right now, I am not looking to add a tenant, but business is good, I basically need to store material in these buildings, and I could also, like I said before, the, the reason why we're extending the building out, I have a, uh, two bigger trucks, a truck crane and a flatbed, which we would like to load and keep inside the building at night. So, to keep out of the weather, whether, you know, so it'd just be easier to load at night. Okay, and, uh, and then the, the last question, uh, was about the, the possibility of some sort of green element on the roof or cooling, now normally I wouldn't defer this to a client, but you are a roofer. Is there some way you could, uh, uh, address that concern, uh, in some fashion? Yes, well, I will be installing a white TPO roof. Okay, so that's one aspect of it. I did, uh, re, um, request some information about solar panels. I did not look into a green roof, but I definitely was inquiring about solar panels to make that building basically self-sufficient. Hey, we appreciate that, Chairman, that's all I have.
Hey.
Mr. Ench.
Okay. Do any members of the board have any questions for Mr. Ench on his testimony? Seeing none. The Mr. Hes, do you have any questions for Mr. Ench on his testimony?
I have no questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hes, Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions for Mr. Ench on his testimony?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hazel, do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Ench on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Ench about his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Not seeing any.
Thank you very much, I have one question, Mr. Ench, would you agree to have, uh, an AED, uh, put into the building where your employees are?
I was actually looking into getting two. One for the new building and one for the one we occupy in building C.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate that, uh, thank you, Mr. Ench. Mr. Skolnick, that's all, do you want to sum up?
Uh, one minute, uh, Chairman, uh, a relatively simple application, there's a case when you have a used variance called Burr Bridge, and that stands for the proposition that if you do a site cleanup, that's gonna serve a, a goal and a purpose of zoning, so I think we have that. Uh, Frank, a, a longtime tenant has purchased the building. Building A is dilapidated, almost falling down, he's gonna clean up the site, uh, improve it, improve the drainage, improve the parking, improve the landscaping, uh, minimal detriment here, uh, his property is the most impacted, uh, the one to the left. Um, there's certainly reasons that Mr. Marucci offered on why, uh, bringing this warehouse into a modern form with a little bit higher roof needs to go, uh, right up instead of meeting the ten feet. And, uh, we think we have a, a reasonable application, and we believe there's sufficient proof for the board to grant this application.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Skolnick. Mr. Hes, I have a question for you, in your letter dated March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, item number twenty-four, I believe, Mr. Skolnick, you're asking for a waiver of that item. The slopes of proposed drainage pipes on sheet four does not agree with the slopes, calculate your, uh, drain slopes. You're asking for a waiver on that, is that correct?
Uh, that should be corrected, it's very minor.
I'm sorry?
That should be corrected, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's a very minor item.
Okay.
It's just a math calculation.
Okay, then, Mr. Skolnick, we're gonna have to have you do that, please.
That's, that's fine.
Thank you. Okay. What agreeable people, I like this. Uh, any members of the board, do any members of the board have any questions or comments? Uh, and what I'd like to do is have Ms. McGovern read over the conditions, and if anybody has additional conditions once she's done.
Yeah, there's not very many.
Very good.
They, they will comply with Mr. Hes's report, they will install an AED, uh, in the new building, I don't know that you can or put a condition for something that's in the old building. Uh, they will install a white TPO roof. Uh, they will agree, they will do a video to determine structural integrity of the existing storm culvert, do you want to put a time limit when that has to be done, you know, within thirty days or?
Mr. Ench, what, what? What's reasonable, Mr. Hes?
Or can I, can I comment on that?
Who's, who's this?
This is Frank Ench.
Mr. Ench, go right ahead, sir.
Okay, one, one, we, we had that meeting last time, um. I did contact Jimmy Williams that works for the town about what was the best way to consider that, he said it would be very hard to get to do a complete run of that culvert. I did call Speedy Sewer, okay, they, they have the cameras and the robots, but he said because it's, the access is limited, there's only two outlets, I think there's one over, uh, well, you could get to it by uh, Park Avenue by, uh, Conde Lumber. There is a catch basin in our yard, but at the time, with all the heavy rains, he said it, it was two foot of water that it could, it's almost impossible to go of any distance with it, so, uh, you know, maybe as it maybe we get into like a drought weather, we could put a camera to go as far as we can. But it's, um, it was, Jimmy said it was gonna be very hard to do, and then Speed, Louis, Louis Moran from Speedy Sewer said it was, it would be tough to get any distance without poking holes into the McGovern, can I suggest that this be a condition of a certificate of occupancy? That'll give us a number of months, town's protected, because it'll get the report. Uh, but we'll have a number of months to find a good time. Condition.
If, if the board is okay with that, I'm okay with that.
Issue wins of a CO.
That, that makes sense, that makes absolute sense. Unless, unless any member of the board has an objection, that makes sense. Uh.
That'll give you plenty of time, Frank.
Okay.
And I'm sure the town will work with you if there's it.
And that is it for conditions.
Well, you also, you also have all reports from the LSRP.
Oh, Ellis.
Will be provided.
Oh, you want those to be provided to Ellis?
Yes, please.
Uh, who do you want them to go to, the engineers?
Yeah, the engineer, please.
Chairman, I will, I respectfully request that we not be charged, that we not be charged against an escrow to review environmental reports, because that's the state DEP. I respectfully request, that's a, a cost generative item, and that's uh, you know, I understand why you want it, but, but to charge. Yep, that, that should actually be submitted to the municipal engineer, and, uh, she would be able to review it.
Okay, so then there won't be an escrow, Mr. Skolnick, is that?
Actually, if I may, that, those should go to the construction official, they're the environmental reports, that's really part of the construct function officials.
Okay.
We appreciate, we appreciate that consideration. Thank you.
Chairman, I would ask that both get copied, the engineer and if you're Mr. Marucci, the construction official.
How about the engineer and the construction official?
The engineer provides the maps.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Okay. So let's, let's see if I got this right, uh, Ms. McGovern, you'll help, I'm sure. So, I make a motion that, uh, based on the testimony, uh, the, so you have two C variances, two C one variances. Uh, are we agreeing a C one, or you want a C two, Mr. Marucci?
Well, the C one for the, the C one for the side yard, but a C two for the parking, so.
Okay, so the parking is easy, that's a pre-existing non-conforming condition that you're actually improving. You see one hardship, is that correct? That's your testimony. And the C one hardship without that, without substantial detriment to the public good, without some set, of substantial impairment to the intent and the purpose of the zone plan and the ordinance of the municipality, you're actually i- uh, im- improving safety uh, and the general welfare of the public in the area, it's a more desirable visual environment. I make a motion that we approve PB twenty-one dash twelve, twenty-three, twenty-three dash twelve, L and B Realty Group LLC, Block sixty-two, Lot one, uh, one oh six, Ashland Avenue. Uh, with conditions as reported, do I have a second?
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Garino, seconds on the motion, Yamalat.
Mr. Alper.
Thank you, Mr. Alper.
Try again, yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Moraldo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilks?
Yes.
Mr. Cardoza?
Yes.
Ms. Cafr?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney? Yes. Mr. Wainu? Mr. Wainu?
Yes.
And Chairman Barrow.
Yes, motion carries, thank you, Mr. Ench, congratulations, thank you, Mr. Skolnick.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Just like I said, half an hour.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everybody, thank you, we love West Orange.
Thank you. And now, ladies and gentlemen, PB twenty-four dash oh three, Crystal Eagle LLC, Block one eleven, Lot one oh eight, Zone B two, four twenty-four Eagle Rock Avenue, the applicant is proposing to modify the layout of the site improvements and undertake other modifications of, of a developed property in B two zone, no variances required to permit the proposal for the applicant.
Yes, good evening, Chairman, members of the board, Craig Genetti, the law firm, Dave Pitney, on behalf of the applicant, Crystal Eagle LLC. Uh, it was a good summary, Chairman, as to what the application is being proposed for you this evening. Uh, does involve property located at four twenty-four Eagle Rock Avenue, Block one eleven, Lot one point oh eight. Uh, it's a former, uh, Eagle Rock Lane's, uh, bowling alley. Property is located in the B two zone, uh, this is an application for minor site plan approval where we're seeking to give, uh, obviously a, a facelift to the property um, and kind of rehab it for a commercial building. Uh, no additions, no expansions, just, uh, you know, giving a facelift to the building and to the interior. Um, and then modifying the parking layout to make it more efficient, uh, and appropriate, given uh, what's currently out there is, you know, outdated, uh, the property five thousand three hundred square foot building that was, obviously previously the bowling alley, uh, we're proposing to re-stripe the existing parking area, as I mentioned. Uh, increasing the number of parking spaces from a hundred and forty-nine spaces to a total of a hundred and seventy-one spaces. And then obviously other lighting, landscaping, uh, and parking lot improvements, as well as the building of elevations. Uh, at this time, there's no tenant, and that's why we're referring to it as a commercial building. Uh, we anticipate the building to be split into two, uh, or most likely two tenants, potentially more than two tenants. Uh, we also obviously are proposing that the uses would be permitted in the B two zone, uh, going forward. With the property, there's some existing non-conformities with respect, uh, to lot coverage. Uh, currently, you know, the, the lots mostly paved and with the building, it's eighty-six point six percent coverage where fifty percent is permitted. As part of these improvements and some of the additional landscape islands we're providing, we're actually reducing the coverage to eighty-two point one percent. Um, in addition, existing on the property, uh, are parking spots within the front yard, uh, within the front yard. And that's still being proposed just in a more efficient layout, um, with this application. With respect to loading spaces, we're seeking relief for that, um, only because we haven't identified one on the plan, uh, we expect, and some of the uses that are permitted in the zone don't require, um, a loading space, uh, and with potential tenants that would be coming in, we expect that, uh, uh, you know, one would not be required to the extent, uh, uh, that it would be, uh, required by a tenant, then obviously we'd have to come and address that with the board. Um, so with that, um, we do have with us, uh, two witnesses, uh, Paul Corvet from, uh, SESI Engineering, as well as Matt Jarmel from Jarmel Pizzle Architects and Engineers. Uh, they'll be providing the testimony and support of the application, uh, and I think just to correct one thing, I, you know, there is a potential, there could be a single tenant on the property, and I know I said that, uh, you know, anticipating splitting into two or more tenant spaces. Um, but there's always the potential, it could be a single tenant. Um, so unless there's any questions of me, uh, I'd like to call our first witness.
Go right ahead, sir.
Like to call Paul Corvet.
Mr.
Earlier.
Yes.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
And Mr. Corvet, could you just please provide for the board your experience qualifications? Sorry, my, for some reason, my video keeps going off, uh, and licenses in the field of civil engineering?
Uh, sure, I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from the University of Delaware in nineteen eighty-eight. Um, I began Um, I began practicing civil engineering, uh, officially, if you would, from that year on. I earned my first license in the state of New Jersey in nineteen ninety-two, and I have been practicing actively, uh, doing land, land use development, such as this application since then.
And you've been accepted as an expert in the field of civil engineering before, uh, other planning boards, zoning boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
Uh, this time, Chairman, I'd ask that Mr. Corvett be accepted as an expert in the field of civil engineering.
Mr. Corvett, is your license, uh, in New Jersey active and in good standing?
Yes, it is, sir.
Thank you. Unless any members of the board have any questions, we'll accept Mr. Corvett as a licensed civil engineer in the state of New Jersey. Go right ahead, sir.
Very good. We'd like to share our screen, please. We can. Can everybody see the set of plans now?
Yes, and Mr. Corvett, if you kind of go through it, if you can just, the, these aren't new exhibits, correct? You're referring to the, the latest plan set that was submitted to the planning board?
Yes, it is. They're dated April nineteenth of this year.
So I would just ask, as you kind of, you know, work through, uh, and talk with respect to, um, what's shown on the screen, you just identify what sheet you're referring to when you're testifying.
I do understand. Um, I'd like to start with the existing conditions plan, which is known as sheet EC one. And of course, this plan shows, uh, basically the existing survey that was done, done of the property in its current state. Um, the site, as you can see, and no fronts on Eagle Rock Avenue. Uh, there's approximately twenty-five thousand square foot building, which is the former bowling alley. Um, currently, there are a hundred and forty-nine parking spaces in the parking lot. There is circulation in the parking lot around the building, um, and two-way everywhere else. Let's see. And currently, there is no defined loading area or dock for this particular use as well. And, uh, there is also no existing curb around the perimeter of the, I'll call it the flag part of the, of the property. Uh, with regards to the, what we call the stem, there is, um, just that one single access. Again, there's angled parking, which is facing towards Eagle Rock Avenue, favoring parking in that direction. Um, there is also some circulation currently through the adjacent property. Uh, and this part of the property is currently lit by, um, a series of, uh, P S E N G light poles, as you can see, on the western side of the property. Okay. And I think that covers the existing conditions briefly, and if we could go, uh, to the site plan. Now, the site plan, um, adds some amenities and brings the, the site up into, and many items of the site up into conformance with today's standards. Um. There is, um, curbing that's proposed on the east side of the stem. We're also adding a stop bar and a stop sign. The angled parking in that section of the, of the site has been changed to ninety-degree parking. And three, um, of the parking spaces are, as you can see, are now landscaped item islands. And one on the, uh, eastern side of the stem was converted to break up the, uh, long line of parking spaces and have no more than twenty in a row.
Excuse me, real quick, excuse me, what's the date of these plans? Because the plans I have don't match this.
They're April nineteenth of twenty twenty-four, as I stated earlier.
Is it, is it the same set that we have on the website?
I think you have to scroll down to the second page of the agenda. I actually have the same issue.
All right, thanks.
And that has, that has the updated set.
Oh, a different version, okay.
Yes, we just, we just submitted this a couple of weeks ago. Okay, um, proposed on the site now, um, with the other improvements, uh, will end up with a hundred and seventy parking spaces. This is accomplished mostly by re-striping the existing parking lot and providing curb in several areas. There are also, as you can see, in the darkened areas of the plan, some landscaping that's proposed also to help, uh, improve the site. Um, also, the circulation within site is pretty much the same as it was previously. There's two-way circulation, um, everywhere in, on the site, except for on the eastern side of the building, which I would refer to as behind the building. On the western side of the site, we're proposing some park, some curbing to better define the lot, our lot and the lot next door to the west. Um, also, that's being done on the northern side of the parking lot, where, excuse me, where there's, uh, an area that's being landscaped as well. And as you can see, the other darkened areas on the planner for that. Also proposed are two dumpster areas. We've provided one on either end of the site, uh, in order to, you know, possibly uh, have less of a distance to travel to take the trash to the trash, um, receptacle. And those trash receptacles, um, are provided, again, not with any particular tenant in mind, but, um, as a guess of what would be required. The entire extent of the parking lot is to be milled and overlaid to make it look better and wear better. Um, we are proposing two E V make-ready parking spaces. There are improvements on the western side of the building for, uh, the sidewalk, and six handicap spaces are being added, and as you notice, they are split in anticipation of perhaps the building being divided, uh, north and south, uh, in order to provide for a, a couple of tenants in that, in that regard. Uh, let's see. As far as that goes, yes, and, um, the, the site plan, as constructed, as proposed, will in fact reduce the amount of impervious cover on the site. Then we could go to grading. Next is the grading plan, which is sheet G one, I believe. And, uh, the grading plan sheet shows, uh, enlargement of the, of the grades at the parking area or the handicap areas. Also, just where we're adding curb, it shows the spot elevations for the top and bottom of the curb. The rest of the, of the parking area is going to remain at its existing grade, and as again, it's just a mill and overlay for the rest of that, that pavement. We can move on to, this is the soil erosion control sheet. We're not going to discuss that at the moment. Um, and we're moving on to the lighting plan, please. This is the lighting plan sheet L one. It's also dated, uh, April nineteenth. And this plan indicates that we are providing at least, um, a half of a foot candle of lighting intensity everywhere on the site. This is achieved by adding two new light poles and upgrading one pole on the southern and eastern side of the site and upgrading one, two, three, four existing light poles on the west and portion of the site. We go to landscape. This sheet is, uh, landscape plan sheet LA one. Um, and I'll just be brief with this sheet. It has been, uh, up, updated and revised uh, to conform with the comments that we received about, uh, providing indigenous species. As part of that plan, uh, I'm sorry, never mind. But on sheet ST one, we can see an overhead view of the existing entrance on Eagle Rock Avenue. And we have a three hundred and eighty-five foot long sightline, which is shown in plan only. Um, and to the, to the driveway right, a four hundred and forty-five foot sightline, uh, going the other way up Eagle Rock Avenue. And these two sightlines demonstrate that in the horizontal, there is nothing in the way of the site distance. And I think that's it. And lastly.
No, go ahead. Keep going.
So this next sheet is a, a sheet where we tested the, um, ability of two types of vehicles to navigate the site. One is a fire truck, a pumper truck is what we used as, um, as our model. And you can trace its, its track through the site, and you can see that it doesn't, it is in fact able to, uh, circulate in from Eagle Rock Avenue around the site in a counterclockwise direction and then back out again without any trouble. And the same is true for the, um, SU forty, which is a single unit box truck, and it can also make the same route, um. And we, we needn't go through all the details, I don't think, for this.
Um, and Mr. Corvett, you noted, um, you, you talked about the lighting being added, and that lighting is not only for access to the building, but for the parking lot as well?
Yes, sir.
And that's an improvement over what exists today?
Yes, it is.
Uh, and in addition, with the parking, do we have compact car parking spaces?
No, they're all full-size spaces.
Uh, yeah.
I was like, okay, I'm sorry. I forgot. Along the back, we changed into compact car spacing, yes.
Got it. Um, and you mentioned, uh, well, let me ask you this, you know, is this parking layout, um, and the, the lighting improvements, you know, better, uh, and more efficient parking layout than what exists today on the property?
Of course, the, it resulted in more, uh, parking spaces and a better circulation.
And from a parking standpoint, the parking was designed effectively for the, uh, uh, the highest parking requirement of a permitted use in the zone, which was a fitness center. Is that correct?
That's correct, which would be one per one hundred square feet, I believe. Yep. Hundred to fifty.
And you mentioned that, um, existing or previously existing, uh, there was access from the adjacent property. Uh, is, is that going to, is it exists as part of the, the application as proposed?
There's, there's curving proposed between the two lots in order to, um, I'll say formalize the parking on the stem and make it more traditional. Go ahead.
Sure, and I'll submit to the board, there's no, you know, parking easement or parking arrangement, uh, that exists on the property. Um, and with respect to the ADA spaces, um, are they ADA compliant and will access to the building with ADA, you know, ramps and whatnot be ADA compliant as well?
Yes, yes, it is. And that's the sheet on the grading plan with the enlargement that demonstrates that.
Uh, just checking my notes. And a signage, um, is the, the same pylon signs going to be used for signage?
Yes, it is. It's indicated on the plan that the existing pylon sign will remain, or existing sign will be, will remain and be resurfaced.
Got it. And you had an opportunity to review, uh, the C M E review letter dated February twentieth, twenty twenty-four?
So I have.
And your office, uh, revised the plans, which are the, which is the plan set that you testified to and presented to the board this evening? Is that correct?
That is, that is correct.
And did your office prepare a letter dated April nineteenth, twenty twenty-four responding, uh, to those?
Yes, we did.
Um, if you can just identify, I think there were some comments from the review letter where you, uh, you know, indicated you to provide testimony, uh, in address, but and we can address those now, but everything else that we don't touch on, you know, that you revised the plans to address those comments. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Uh, dealing with comment four, uh, you noted that, uh, or the, the comment four dealt with the town code requiring the perimeter of all parking areas be curbed, um, and you indicated you were requesting a waiver for this requirement, I, I believe for the, um, looking for the key map, but I guess it's really the west part of the parking area, uh, where parking is not proposed and, and along that perimeter. You just explain, uh, why?
Um, the main reason for that, uh, is because the existing drainage patterns, um, presently without curb, they flow off the site or off into the, off of the paved area, um, along that line currently. And since we're not changing any of the grades on site at all, we wanted to keep that area free of curb so that the, the drainage could run, continue to run across and run off.
And I believe comment twelve, uh, was referring to wheel stops for the angled parking, I would say to the rear of the building on the east side of the property. Uh, and you provide testimony whether you think the wheel stops are necessary?
Uh, yeah, I, I don't think that they're necessary. They're certainly, um, something that becomes a, both a maintenance and a slope, snow plowing nightmare, um, and the, the applicant, speaking for the applicant, um, prefer not to provide those.
And, uh, we touched on it a little bit, but comment fourteen talked about the fact that the, uh, uh, vehicular connection, uh, with the adjoining lot one point oh seven, you know, now being removed. Uh, in your opinion, is that, uh, present a, you know, better layout in, in operation and circulation for the property, uh, as opposed to what was existing there?
Oh, what, what I can say is, is that that property still has three points of access even without, um, even by installing, uh, that, that section of curb. Um, and as you said, since there is no agreement that for that particular lot to share the parking on, on, you know, the subject property, um, I would think that that property was likely to have been approved without that access. Um, and I would submit that, you know, that, that may be an indication that it stands on its own.
And comment fifteen, uh, I, I noted it in our intro, but no loading spaces being proposed as part of this application. Is that correct?
That's correct. With the, as you indicated earlier, with the, with the space count, parking space count proposed, it would favor tenants that would not need, uh, a loading dock.
Uh, with respect to comment eighteen of the board engineer review letter, and this is actually kind of touches on also, I think, a comment in the board planner review letter about, uh, connectivity and access to Crystal Lake. Uh, none is being proposed, correct?
Um, that is correct. I, I believe there's other issues besides engineering issues, uh, to that, um, as far as the ability to provide that access.
And in fact, our property doesn't actually abut or join Crystal Lake. There's actually a, a, the adjacent, um, I think it's maybe lot one point oh one, uh, to the east of us. That property actually fronts on Crystal Lake, not our property, correct?
Right.
And, and that lot kind of, though it fronts up on Eagle Rock, it has a stem that goes all the way to the back, uh, between our property and, uh, the lake. Is that correct?
That's correct.
With respect to the other comments in the board professional review letter, uh, have you addressed those as part of the revised plans?
Yes, with one exception that I believe we skipped over. Um, and that was number nine, uh, it was the feasibility of providing a sidewalk along the stem from Eagle Rock Avenue to the building. Um, the width of that stem is exactly sixty feet, which is what you need to have double stack parking. That completely precludes the addition of anything else in that stem as it's currently designed.
Uh, I believe that covers the comments from the board engineer review letter and I think as well as the, the, uh, board planner review letter, um. And if there's any questions from the board of this witness?
Okay, we'll start out with Vice Chairman Garino. Do you have any questions?
Okay, we'll start out with Vice Chairman Garino. Do you have any questions?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. To the engineer, I had a quick question. When you were looking at our master plan, did you happen to take review of our complete streets segment? Which has, you know, compliance for pedestrian accessibility and walkability on the property?
No, I did not.
Okay. You, I mean, I appreciate if you would, because the thing is, I don't see, other than the front, the front of the structure having a sidewalk. I don't see anywhere else where. Shoppers or customers or pedestrians can get to the building without walking through, you know, areas where cars will be moving. And within the circulation of the property. So, I mean, that would be very important to us, that the safety of our pedestrians and our residents. To get to the facility without having to walk as much through the moving traffic areas. That's that's very important.
I would submit that it's pretty typical in a parking lot, say, for instance, in a mall or somewhere like that where. A pedestrian would have to walk in between cars and and across aisles. I can't see this site as having intense traffic movement just by nature of its size and. You know, the kind of uses that are permitted in the zone.
Okay, I mean, it's it's something that's part of our complete streets. You know, and.
What is that? But is that is that sidewalks along street frontage versus as a, yeah, as opposed to sidewalks within the. Interior of the.
You know, we'd like to, we'd like to get, no, thank you, sir. We'd like to get sidewalks everywhere we can. Make access to the property more pedestrian friendly. We do. You know, is it possible? It can sometimes, sometimes it can't. That's just my, you know, our request is to look at the complete street segment. To understand where these accommodations can be met. And I mean, not to talk about another application, but we just had a huge application that. Came to us reviewing the complete streets and added re-accommodation they could to reduce the. Traffic flow of pedestrians walking through in unprotected areas. So, I mean. Could also mean signage, could also mean, you know, roadway markings. It's just everything we can do to make. The area pedestrian friendly, walkable. That's that's just my observation and my question and my and my inquiry. Another thing is you mentioned that there is no agreement with the parking or anywhere being used by anyone else, but you do know. That the Chit Chat Diner has people using currently. So when you take over this property and when you start developing and putting your businesses in here. How will you monitor to make sure that no other? Business is using your property?
I, well, I think probably right now it's being used because. Of the fact that it's available and and, you know, the bowling alley is not, sorry, I apologize for my video keep turning off. Oh, my God. And. You know, that's kind of no different than any. Properties that are adjoining, you know, what the, once it's in use and in operation. You know, we expect that. Won't be as much of an issue because it will will be in use and being occupied.
Okay, and and my last question, if I missed it, then you told me I missed it. I don't see any areas for charging stations. Did I miss something?
Yes, there there are two proposed. We'll point those out to you.
Okay.
Right there, those two are set aside for make ready.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions? Mr. Covert. On his testimony.
Thank you, Chairman. So I think that increasing the parking and the heat islands and the EV charging stations will certainly make the. Site more marketable. I have had numerous calls. From people curious about this site. I guess my, one of the questions that just came up, what? Is that it seems to me that there is access directly from this parking lot to the path around Crystal Lake. And did I hear that that is not correct? That would be my question. Is there accent? My question is, is there access directly from this parking lot to the path around Crystal Lake?
So I I think Paul may be able to answer that afterwards, but. I don't think there's any access design or proposed, other than the fact that there's no curbing and someone could effectively walk. To it, but. The the. Lot one point oh one, which I believe the rear of lot one point oh one. Which I basically call the functional rear does have some sort of an access easement that goes around. The lake and is shown on the tax maps, but then it has a stem. That goes kind of further down and along our rear property or that, you know, that property line. That kind of separates our lot from the lake. So you would almost have to go off of our lot through the adjacent lot. To get access to that path.
So there is no direct frontage?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor McCartney. Mr. Alper, do you have any questions for Mr. Covert on his testimony?
Sure, just to touch on the mayor's question, it does look on street view as if the. Parking near the back right of the site does, you know, there may be someone else's property between there, but it does look as if it connects. It's I can't, I don't think there's a fence between them. It looks like somebody who wanted to walk into the lake could do that from the. Bowling alley property, so not sure.
Well, yeah, I think that's the point I was making. There's no, there's no barrier, right? If someone wanted to park and just start walking, they they could. But there there's no. There's no path on that adjacent property that connects to our property. To the lake.
Understood. I think my only other question is. I'm curious if it might be of interest or possible to maybe expand the size of the planting areas in the parking lot stem. Those three areas that are each taking up one parking spot, just to get even a little bit more green in there, a little bit less asphalt, just a suggestion.
Yeah, and and go ahead, Paul.
Those landscape areas in the parking lot was configured to get that one hundred and seventy spaces that we wanted to show. For that one per one hundred and fifty ratio. So it's maximized out at this point.
Speaking just for myself, I'd be happy to have three, let's say, fewer parking spots in each of those to be two parking spot wides, but you know, that's just to throw the idea out there. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Mr. Wilks, do you have any questions for Mr. Covert?
Um, no, no questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilks. Mr. Klein, do you have any questions for Mr. Correct?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You talked about that there's no loading space, there's no loading spaces required? For this. Potentially whatever this use is going to be?
Oh, go ahead, Paul.
We're asking for a waiver for the requirement of a loading space and we're asking that for that. Because the the tenant that is most anticipated would be one that would probably take deliveries in a van. Like a UPS truck or something like that, rather than something that would require, you know, a formal loading dock for something much larger. Than that.
And I think also, Mr. Klein, like some of some of the permitted uses, for instance, like a fitness center, which we've also designed to to meet the parking requirement, don't have a loading spit like. The the town ordinance doesn't have every use has a loading space. Certain uses don't require a loading space in the ordinance. That's why it's it's not being posed.
Okay, I mean, I'm just looking at the angled compact spaces in the back with the fifteen-foot wide drive aisle. And you don't want to put the wheel stops. I understand that reasoning. Could you put a rubber rail against the building so that people pull all the way into those spots? Because you know it's not going to be all compact cars. There's going to be somebody who's going to be there. And then when it's less than twelve feet wide, it's going to be difficult for the emergency vehicle to get through there. So that that's one of my concerns. I thought maybe that could become a loading area if you had to. But you want all the all those spaces.
Yeah, and I would I would submit, Mr. Klein. With a lot of the uses and even potential tenants, many either wouldn't require a loading space under. The ordinance or as Mr. Covert noted, the tenant wouldn't require it. If we had a tenant and they came to us and said, we need a loading space. We would have them come back to the board and they'd identify where where the loading space would be best appropriate, rather than us just picking one randomly.
All right. So then I guess my concern now is just the angled compact parking spaces. If people don't pull all the way into those spots. That fifteen-foot wide drive aisle, which is one way, is going to be impinged if somebody's sticking out or if they're not. Actually a compact space back there, a compact car. I'm a little concerned about that. So what can you do to assure that people will pull all the way to the building?
Well, I'd go back to with no wheel stops. It might help for one thing. I guess it's just going to have to be monitored. I I don't know that there's any device that's going to prevent someone from pulling in all the way. Or, so I honestly, I think that would be the only way.
All right. I mean, they're probably the least desirable spots, other than the ones out by Eagle Rock Avenue for distance to the door. So, okay, all right. Yeah, that was my only question. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Mr. Smalda, do you have any questions for Mr. Covert on his testimony?
No, I'm going to save him for architectural. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smalda. Mr. Cardoza, do you have any questions for Mr. Covert on his testimony?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Along the lines of Mr. Guarino's, Mr. Klein's concerns, just. From the entrance to the. You know, to where the building actually sits, that's that, you know, fairly long drive. It looks to me like it would be an on-ramp for people to accelerate. You know, while potentially their coworkers are, you know. Walking to the building as pedestrians. Is there potential to do any? Type of signage or striping to say, you know, slow pedestrians or or something to that effect?
Think we could do something like that.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
Now, where was that area that you were having the striping in the STEM area?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Believe that's all my questions for now.
Thank you, Mr. Cardoza. Mr. Cap, Ms. Capford, do you have any questions for Mr. Covert on his testimony?
Yeah, just just a couple. Yeah, I guess one, maybe this is more a comment than a question. I just, you know, sharing the maybe comments and concerns raised by. Mr. Guarino and Mayor McCartney and and Mr. Cardoza regarding pedestrian circulation. And also access to Crystal Lake. I I've. I observe people that appear to park there currently to use the path that's there, so you can access it. From the parking lot. So, yeah, just a a comment about that, that, you know. Probably if there's an effort to, you know, maintain some some sort of access, it would be appreciated. And then a question about drainage. The area that's where I think there's proposed curb in that same area kind of next to Crystal Lake and then. Yeah, yeah, down there. Is there a way that drainage, I mean, is that going to sit there or can that drain with curb there?
Oh, that that's graded, so it goes back towards the south of the site and. You know, maintains the same pattern that it's following right now.
Okay, so it's not going to sit like next to that one landscape island. It's gonna, it can. It'll, okay, yeah, I can't see the spot elevations there. And then, yeah, the one other spot. Oh, that's great. Okay, I see that. Yeah, thank you. And then the other spot was. The curb that's proposed on the east side in the the STEM area of the flag lot, yeah, that is. Is that just going to drain then toward Eagle Rock? Like, is that going to create a new drainage pattern there?
Yeah, it's the same, it's not going to be a a new drainage pattern. Since we're just milling and overlaying, the grades are going to be held exactly as they are right now. And I think a portion goes towards Eagle Rock at this point in time and a portion back to the site.
And then it. I guess my question there, though, is there curb proposed that would kind of direct all of the the neighboring runoff? The the runoff from the neighboring property toward the street, is that?
Yes, that's that's what that curve accomplishes.
And then, but currently it runs to to. To the west, is that correct?
Yeah, to to our property and then goes to Eagle Rock. Just kind of cutting it off halfway.
Yeah, I mean, is that going to cause an issue like a drainage issue along Eagle Rock Avenue?
It should not. We're we're not adding any additional water. We're just breaking it up. So I would think it. Might actually end up being a little bit better.
Okay, yeah, just curious because it, I would think maybe, you know, because the curb is there, it might direct more at that location along Eagle Rock than what gets there currently. Because it currently runs like across across the parking lot, but. Yeah, thank you for responding to the questions. That's all I had.
Great. Mr. Covert, just a question, two things. So in line with Vice Chairman Guarino and Mr. Cardoza. What if you had traffic calming devices on the stem? Because right now it's a raceway. And as as pedestrians will be walking up there and you say we can't put a pedestrian walkway. Could you have humps, two humps in the in the road that would prevent people from speeding in or out? And another thought, if the board had the mind and we gave you, because you did, you did. Put in for variances when you posted, what if we gave you three parking spaces and made those into tree islands also? If we gave you a variance for three parking spaces and you put in three more tree islands around the site?
I would I would defer to counsel as to how that would work since there's no tenant right now.
Okay.
Know if that would complicate it or not.
Okay, and one other thing, along the area by Crystal Lake, would you be able to put up some type of greenery, evergreens? That would prevent people from walking through as opposed to a fence?
We're not, we're not proposing a fence.
I I know you're not proposing anything, but this would, this would help with the comments of people saying, well, they go out there and they park and they go to Crystal Lake. So if you put up some evergreens, arborvitae or whatever is indigenous and create a nice berm, so you'd be adding some green plantings. Helping with the water runoff and preventing people from walking through. Just a thought. I'm just throwing that out.
If if I could, sir, though. Where on this particular plan, would you follow the property line? There's, we don't have any room from the property line. To what we're. What we're developing. Not sure how we would accomplish that.
Okay, just a thought. Well, it says, it says existing trees to be removed. So what are you putting there when you, after you remove them?
We're replacing trees on the site. As shown on the landscape plan. That's what we're putting there now.
Okay, so what, why, let me ask you a question. Why are you removing those trees? And could you put trees back up in that site or are you using it for something else?
A tree that we're removing is not something that is very aesthetic. Let me put it that way.
So can you put trees back up in the area where you're removing them?
That's that's what's being shown here.
Perfect, okay.
Yes, sir.
That was the question. Good stuff. Okay, so.
Chairman, Chairman, if I may, just on a a couple of things, I know.
Chairman, we have our hand raised.
Hang on a second. Okay, go for it.
Sure, the the. With respect to the. Speed bumps, and I know, and maybe Mr. Mr. Covert can testify too, but I've heard. Before, when that's been suggested that from plowing standpoint, snow plowing, it becomes a problem. They get kind of beat up. We could look, you know, as we indicated, we would stripe it and put signage. And kind of, you know, make sure it's. Aware. We'd also discuss with our engineer if there's any other kind of calming measure that's not a. Changing the the road kind of layout.
Okay, so how about what they do on the turnpike and the parkway before you come to a toll booth where they have like a a roadway that has a texture to it? So you you feel the vibration?
Yeah, so kind of, kind of like that makes like that.
Saying no, he's the expert. I'm just throwing things out there.
It it would be nicer if they could line up. The landscape parking spaces. It might may seem a little tighter and it may make it a little calmer horizontally as opposed to a. Speed home, which, by the way, we have on our public streets and they plow them all the time. So I don't know if that's.
If I could. If I could, if I could jump in there for a second, those um, those peninsulas are. Are centered around telephone poles or utility poles. They're not shown there, but um. That's why they are where they are. Oh, there it is. Okay.
Okay, uh, let's move on. Mr. Hess, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I have no questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Corret?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Corret, could you please uh just confirm for the accuracy of the record? What the uh, on your zoning tabulation, what the maximum lot coverage it's required is?
Believe it's maximum required or maximum provided?
Maximum required. I believe you have uh. Okay, I see it's been changed here because of the the copy I had did have it at fifty percents. And I see it's changed here. Okay, I just wanted to.
We made that revision, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No worries.
Thank you, Mr. Hazel. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Corret on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Corret? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Chairman, uh, Ms. Caffrey has her.
I'm sorry, Ms. Caffrey.
Thanks, uh, thank you, Chairman. Um, yeah, just wanted a clarification. I think when um you started talking about evergreens. Uh, separating, and I may have misunderstood you, but um. Having evergreen separating the the at the property line, um. I would suggest that we maintain some access to Crystal Lake. I know this this specific site is not being developed, you know, to. Create parking for Crystal Lake, but I think if you could, yeah, maintain those parallel parking spaces, it would be appreciated.
Okay, um, again, we don't have frontage um on Crystal Lake.
Well, I guess you're saying keep, keep the parallel parking spaces we've shown and not landscape it.
Yes, that's what, yeah, that's what I'm suggesting.
I didn't understand. I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry about that. Thanks.
That's okay. Okay, seeing none, uh, thank you, Mr. Corret.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call our architect, Matthew Jarmel.
Good evening.
Mr. Jarmel, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Jarmel, if you could please provide for the board your education experience qualifications and licenses in the field of uh architecture?
I'd be very pleased to. Um, I have a bachelor of architectural degree from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. College of Architecture and Design. I also have an MBA with a concentration in real estate development and urban land use from Rutgers University. I've been a registered architect in New Jersey since nineteen ninety-four. In total, I'm uh. Board certified by the National Council of Architectural Registration Boards. Which allows me reciprocity in other states. In total, I have thirty-six state licenses plus Washington DC. All of them, including New Jersey, are in good standing. I've testified hundreds of times before municipal zoning and planning boards. Throughout New Jersey, including this board.
Unless any member of the board has any questions, we accept Mr. Jarmel as a licensed architect in state of New Jersey. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Jarmel, you you're, you and your office have been engaged as the project architect for this site?
That is correct.
And you are someone in your direction to prepare the plan, the architectural plans and renderings that were submitted as part of the application?
That is also correct, yes.
Uh, just using those plans or discussing those plans, if you just kind of walk through kind of the uh exterior building changes and materials, colors and so forth.
Okay, what I'd like to do is share my screen if I can. It looks like I can. And I'm gonna start. Is everyone seeing my drawing? This, this is drawing SD one oh one. I was submitted with the site plan and dated January second, two thousand twenty-four. And it depicts the floor plan of of the building and some proposed changes. As I believe many of you are aware, this is currently a bowling alley. Or really a vacant bowling alley. The building is single story in height. It's twenty-five thousand three hundred square feet in area. A large portion of it that you can see by these dotted lines uh is is a barrel vaulted roof structure. Uh, that represents about twenty-one thousand square feet of the roof is barrel vaulted and in the front of the building, about forty-one hundred square feet. Is has a flat roof. The current entry to the building is just off center, not too approximately where I'm putting uh my cursor. Uh, and the building is, does not have an at-grade entry, several steps up from grade, so it's not handicapped accessible currently. And we've depicted the building showing potentially two tenants. I want to emphasize that we don't know who the tenants are at this time. Uh, all the renovations we're doing to the building are to make it, and the site are to make it more marketable. Uh, so this could land up being one tenant, two tenants, or or maybe, maybe uh three or four, depending on how it how it leases up. But the drawings that we've submitted uh propose two separate tenants. Uh, where we have separate entries that we're creating for them. Uh, this will call the um. Northwest corner of the building, uh, where we are creating new new uh. Glass storefronts on the edges in the corner of the building, as well as a handicapped or ADA compliant ramp and stair. That would create a main entry number one. And then similarly, on the opposite side of the building, we are. Because there's no room to build an exterior stair, we're cutting into the building, actually making it a little bit smaller. Creating stairs and and uh interior doors, but this side of the building would be accessed by an existing ramp. That is on the south side of the building uh and into an entryway. And that's the the floor plan. We also prepared uh. Elevations of the building, uh, suggesting some proposed modifications. I'd like to actually uh. Share with you, is everyone seeing the photograph of the building existing? Okay, so this is, uh, I don't know if we can call it an exhibit. This is taken right off of Google Maps. It's a street view. You can walk around the whole building. I guess the Google car drove around it. Uh, and this is dated August two thousand nineteen. It shows when the building was still somewhat in use. And you can see, uh, it looks like a bowling alley. It has a a front entry with some uh stolen aggregate on it. You can see how there's several steps up, old windows, and if you zoom in, you can see there's some residential siding and a combination of brick that's painted. One side of the building, the wall is higher. It actually creates a parapet. This is the side, by the way, the west elevation that has. Uh, flat roof before the barrel starts. And then on the northern side of the flat roof, there's some mechanical equipment, but you can see it. There's, there's no screening. And what we propose to do, um, and this is, you know, again, this is drawing. SD one oh two, same date, January second, two thousand twenty-four. These are proposed elevations. So what we propose to do is uh really kind of reface the building. Uh, anywhere where you're seeing windows and doors, they're new, they're storefronts, they're glass. If I zoom in on the left side of the drawing. Which is that northwest corner, you can see that we've created it uh and a ramp for accessibility, stairs, new glass doors, glass entrance way. This is an existing door off to the side that we would replace. This is the side of the building where you currently have no screening of mechanical equipment. So we propose to construct a uh new parapet that matches the existing, which is on the right side or the uh. Southwestern facade or west, west-south facade, uh, which would probably be a metal panel system. And it would hide any mechanical equipment. Presumably, when the building is renovated or tenanted, it's gonna receive new HVAC equipment. Uh, incidentally, all that would intend, you know, be the intent to modernize that equipment, make it energy efficient. Uh, and and meet or exceed current energy codes. Some of the other uh aspects where the former door was will be filled in with brick. That matches uh or brick size of module that matches the existing. And the intent is all the brick is painted, so we would graphically repaint it so that it matches and it looks nice. On the uh right side of the drawing, these are all new windows, new, this is that recessed storefront I spoke about. Uh, in both cases, we've shown tenant signage of approximately thirty square feet, twenty feet long, not approximately thirty square feet. Twenty feet long by a foot and a half height. We're allowed a maximum sign of a hundred and twenty square feet at each entry, I believe, so we we're in compliance there. Uh, you know, I've heard, I saw in the planner's report, uh, there was a question about whether or not solar would work here. Although the building could go through a ma, the building would require a major structural modification to carry solar. Uh, the building has, as I stated earlier, wood trusses that are bower, bower vaulted. Um, in fact, there was a a roof failure some years ago that was recently, that was repaired and reinforced. Uh, so the roof would need to be structurally reinforced, and I'd say it's probably uh financially or technically unfeasible to add solar to the roof. I will note, and I can show you uh in the photo, that the roof does have a reflective coating on it now. Which helps tremendously in terms of reducing heat island effect and reflecting the sun and and presenting, preventing the building from absorbing heat. Um, on the other sides of the building, uh, they're currently concrete block and it's painted. And it's it's our intent to repaint that block, clean up, repair any cracks or holes and missing masonry. And just make it a nicer looking, presentable building. The one thing I'll point out is, and this is uh, this is. Well, the north facade, so this would be the facade if you could see the building from Eagle Rock that, or uh probably glimpses of it that you would see. Uh, there's an existing bowling sign that we propose to keep or or maintain the rights of it in terms of its size. If there's a tenant that would want to use it, and on this side of the building, we again show, uh, because there's an entry here, the thirty square foot uh sign. And then I I think finally, um, there's an existing pylon sign up on Eagle Rock Avenue. Uh, this sign has uh, we propose to kind of reface and make it available for for tenants that will be moving into the building. Uh, it it's approximately fifty-nine square feet in area. And what we do is we, we have an opportunity to put a tenant logo and arrow pointing in, because the tenants would be far back and then. Give the uh, give the tenants uh individual recognition on the sign. And of course, all signs once tenants would be identified, would would be submitted for. For permits. Uh, final elevation, by the way, is the south elevation. This faces the woods. Um, and again, this is an all masonry block and then the side of it is brick and all this would be painted and refaced. Or painted uh and cleaned up and repaired, um, as well as uh adding the parapet screen. So the entire flat roof of the building will receive a parapet screen that will hide in any existing or proposed mechanical equipment. I believe that covers my testimony and I'd be very pleased to address any questions the board or public have of me.
And Mr. Jarmel, just one more, I guess, follow-up. And in your opinion, based upon uh the uh. Enhancements to the exterior of the building, uh, materials and colors, do you, do you believe this is promoting a desirable visual environment?
I do. Certainly, certainly more desirable than what's there now. And and you know, it's uh, it's uh. It's kind of sad that people don't bowl anymore. Uh, I bowled in this facility when I was a kid. Uh, and the building's tired, it needs some sprucing up. And I think this will help it tremendously, especially the introduction of of glass. And glazing and glass doors and the facade. It'll make it more desirable for retail users.
Thank you. I have nothing further uh directed, Mr. Jarmel.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Guarino, do you have any questions for Mr. Jarmelo's testimony?
Thank you. Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Uh, sir, the um sign, the pylon sign out on Eagle Rock Avenue, and it's a great retention item. How do you propose to illuminate that signage?
At at this juncture, uh, candidly, we haven't really gotten that far because we haven't identified tenants. You know, whatever illumination that we do to the sign would be, be compliant with the ordinance and and, you know, if it was the board's preference to do, say, raised channel. Letters illuminated from behind or or illuminated from the ground, we we would comply with those requirements. I think the sign, by the way, uh, thank you for noting that it it's an important kind of retainage. Because the building's set so far back from the road. I think it's really important for a prospective tenant to have that signage.
Okay, and so will, and your your comments are great to hear. Um, would that also, those comments and applications apply to the signage on the building?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. I appreciate your response. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm Mr. Guarino. Uh, Mayor McCartney, do you have any questions for Mr. Jarmel on his testimony?
I do not have any questions. I would really like to see this developed.
Thank you, Mayor McCartney. Mr. Albert, do you have any questions for Mr. Jarmel's testimony?
Um, no real questions, but just to throw it out there about that pylon sign, um. Maybe it's just me, but I've always thought that it's a little confusing of which driveway that pylon sign is referring to. It just may be something to think about when uh redesigning for new tenants, wh- whether it moves a little bit closer to the. Bowl to the, to the property driveway away from the other one, or if it just uh uses a better arrow or something. It may just be me. But um, I I've always thought it was a little bit not clear, especially if you're coming from the west.
We we can certainly review that and take that under consideration. Thank you.
And I, and I would note too, the the fact that um, there's not gonna be that connectivity with the, with the abutting law as well. Will will help in any confusion as you're coming up, because it could be confusing when you see the pylon sign, then you see the entrance, then you see a. Another entrance with another internal circulation.
Thank you, Mr. Albert. Mr. Wilkes, do you have any questions for Mr. Jarmel's testimony?
No, no questions.
Thank you. Mr. Klein, do you have any questions for Mr. Jarmel on his testimony?
No questions for Mr. Jarmel, but I do want to go back to the. The way to calm the traffic, so. You do it now or you want me to wait to make a comment? So, I mean, I'm looking at a street view coming in from Eagle Rock, and I see the two big utility poles. And I understand you're gonna frame them with curbing and landscaping. Now, on the other side, there's those small concrete. Lights that don't really need to be framed by anything, so. I'd be willing to give up another parking spot so that you could line up. The utility pole landscaping with the spot right across from it. And again, if you did it nice with a tree or something, it might make it seem a little bit. Narrow and it may be something to calm people down if you don't want to do speed humps. Just something to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Mr. Smalda, do you have any questions for Mr. Jarmel on his testimony?
I do, thank you. First of all, I used to bowl there too. I think my average was a third of the address, so thankfully. The records are not kept, uh. So you mentioned before about the compromise to the roof. I know that there were some structural integrity, you know, issues, and you said that that was repaired and everything's. Kind of back to what it was supposed to be or it needs to be reinforced?
No, it's, it it has been repaired. I I wasn't involved in that repair, but I'm I'm aware that it uh was brought in. Actually, the client had shared with me, brought in a structural engineer that specialized in wood trusses, you know, it's rare you see these. But like I come across them occasionally. Um, so it, what I said was that if we were to install solar on the roof. Solar can weigh anywhere from, let's say, eight to ten pounds a square foot. We'd really have to make some major structural reinforcing to the roof.
Yeah, I'm I'm not in favor of solar on a, on a trust roof myself. Um, you know, I'm not a fan of trust roofs in in. Theory, but um, uh, from from my, my previous experiences, but um. So the the question, I know it's a, it's more of a heavy timber type, I believe, at that particular. Yeah, and um, so my question is that if you're going to enclose them into spaces, that's a big void up there. What's the um, what is the fire protection that's uh afforded in that building right now? Is there?
Yeah, cur- currently, the building has a sprinkler system and it would remain and presumably be modernized and adjusted. Uh, I believe, I'm not gonna, I I believe that the sprinklers are above, there there's a ceiling in the, in the facility now. So you don't see the trusses. Uh, there's a very, you can go up into that attic and it it is sprinkled above and below. So it's fairly well protected.
Yeah, I I kind of remember that, but I just don't, I I wanted to verify it for the record because of, you know, I've been up in that attic area too. It's, it's voluminous in size and it's open, wide open. What, if you're, um, if you were to put it into two spaces, would there be a firewall that would be built up?
Um, to the, to the, to the extent that the building code would require a a firewall, it would be. I am certain the demising wall would want to go roof to roof from a security standpoint and a a basic wall usually carries a one-hour rating. So we we would design it accordingly.
Okay, um, the parapets that you're talking about, wood, concrete, uh, you know, masonry?
Um, so on one side of the building, there's the, it goes up already, so the parapet exists. So we, what what we're proposing is sort of a metal screen that would go on top of the existing wall. And where it doesn't exist, just continue around as a metal screen.
I'm sorry, could you say how that was built again? Those those parapets, they're they're metal already?
Yeah, so let me, no, let me, let me show you. Uh, if I can go back to that street view, give me one second, I'll call it up.
I just want to make sure if there, if it it is masonry, you know, I want to make sure the integrity, because that building's old.
So let me, let me share my screen again.
Parapets could, parapets can hurt somebody's head.
Yeah, so if you look on the right side, you know, if you kind of look at the existing, you see how the the wall's higher here than it is here? Right, so on this portion of the wall, it'll be covered, covered with metal.
Right. So on this portion of the wall, it'll be covered, covered with metal. And here, there'll be a new metal, uh, canopy design. It'll have kickers for wind protection. But when it's completed, it'll look like it's all the same. So we're kind of hiding the fact that the building is different. And this is masonry and you can see it's tired, it's hurt, it's got cracks and things in it. So it's our, you know, some things around the door. This is approximately where we're cutting a new entry. So any new doors and windows are going to have structural lintels that'll be steel to support the roof above it and allow for the openings to be created. And then the, the masonry will be repaired.
All right. Um, and as far as, um, I guess, um, cause you have the alarm, uh, the sprinkler systems, the alarm systems will be brought up to code and everything else along with that, correct?
Yeah, they, they, the building would be renovated in accordance. It would fall under the, uh, New Jersey Uniforms, uh, Construction Code Rehabilitation Subcode. So it would have to be, and it would be obviously, uh, submitted to your construction code official for building permits and review.
Okay. And then, uh, regards to the, the fire suppression system, since there is a stand pipe system there, um, I don't know where, I, I forget where the, the, uh, the hookups are for the OS and Y. It, I want to just make sure that those areas are kept clear with parking spaces. I know we were talking about parking spaces before. I didn't want to bring it up until I confirm with you, you know, the existing systems.
So.
I want to make sure wherever the hookup is, that, that there's, there's clear, it's not, it's not designated of another parking spot.
Uh, in, in fact, currently the, the sprinkler riser is in the, the northeast, nor, no, I'm sorry, northwest corner of the building where we propose to put glass. So we're going to land up moving it. So we'll be able to work with your fire department and help them choose exactly where they want it. That stand pipe or Siamese connection or storage connection if they use that.
Okay. All right. Um, I think that's all I have for this. So, you know, these questions here, but thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smiralda. Mr. Codoza, do you have any questions for Mr. Drumel on his testimony?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think some of my questions were, were just answered during, uh, Mr. Smiralda's questioning. Um, you know, just to clarify, so we're only talking external, right? Well, actually backtrack for a second. You said, uh, this was all conceptualized with the idea that there would be two tenants occupying the building, correct?
Yeah, possibly could be one, could be two. It really depends how the leasing works. It might even be, be more. Um, we're as, if you're, if, if I can, uh, excuse me for kind of like assuming, but I, I assume you're going to ask me if there's any internal renovations proposed? Is that where you're going?
Yeah, I was going to assume that that would be kind of a next phase if.
So, so what, what will most likely happen is that we would clean out the inside of the building. So, you know, some of the old construction and things like bathrooms and, uh, bowling lanes would, would be kind of cleaned out so that it shows as a wide open building. You know, brokers like that. And then any improvements, like any walls or bathrooms or uh, that need to be constructed would be on a tenant, uh, improvement basis as a separate permit.
Okay. And then, uh, you also mentioned, uh, when you were speaking with Mr., when you were answering, uh, Mr. Smiralda, um, the potential for additional points of ingress and egress in that. So I guess that.
If, if it, if it would be required, uh, because it would say more than two tenants, we would revisit that.
Okay. Cause then can you point out, cause I'm, I'm having trouble pulling up the, uh, architectural plans marked SD um, on my screen. Can you just pull out all the current, uh, point out all of the current, uh, doors?
Sure. Um, well, let me, let me show you, you know, the proposed, I guess, is probably a better way to call it. So, so this is, this is the drawing SD one oh one, which is the floor plan. So we propose two new main entries, which I'm pointing at one here on the left, one on the right. There's an existing door on the north facade and a stair which would remain. There's an existing door and ramp on the south facade which would remain. And then there's, uh, two rear doors, uh, that, that, uh, actually I think th- these are proposed, uh, for additional egress. So to the extent that egress is needed, uh, based on the tenancy, doors can be popped in where needed.
Understood. Okay. And then I see a third door on the, what is that, northeast?
So, so there's like a back utility room here that exists.
Okay.
And, and that, that door exists for, is for that room, for to access it from outside or inside.
Understood. Okay. That, I just wanted to make sure because, uh, looking at initially seeing the, the SD plans, I thought there was, uh, only the, the rear, you could only exit from the, you know, tenant ones, tenant one as opposed to.
They, they both, they both, both have, as shown now, both have three means of egress.
Okay. And the, as far, the ramp though i- is only, there's only a ramp for the entrance.
There's two, there's two ramps. Uh, this is a new ramp.
Okay.
Or, and, and this is an existing ramp.
Ah, all right. All right. Yeah. The, uh, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ms. Caffrey, do you have any questions for Mr. Drumel?
Mr. Chairman, could I just interrupt? I'm sorry. A real quick question while we're on.
Smiralda, go right ahead.
While we're on the subject of the fire again, um, um, previously there used to be a, um, kitchen in there. And, um, there was suppression system. Was that removed? And was all the ductwork taken out, you know, for the integrity and everything else? And, and, and is there plans to possibly put a food establishment in any of the, those occupancies?
So, so two questions. I don't know the answer as to whether or not it was removed. I, I've been in the building, but I, I, and I know where the kitchen was, but I don't recall. Um, you know, presumably when we clean up the building, anything that's kind of archaic abandoned, that doesn't work, we're going to take out. And that, that would probably include a hood or an ancil system as one is there. At, at this time, I can't comment on who the tenants may or may not be. You know, what, what I can say is, is that if they're allowed in the zone, they'll, they'll be marketed to them. And that if restaurants allowed it, it's possible.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just curious. I just want to make sure that if it, it is going to have that, I, I, you know, that doesn't bother me. It's just that I want to make sure that the old stuff is not reused, you know, repurposed. That, that's, that's more of my comment on that. And the other thing I, I, you know, we, we talked about it before, Mr. Chairman, and one of the things we've been issuing lately is I just want to make sure, I want to be remiss whatever occupancies go in there, that they also, um, uh, have the condition of, of, of AEDs installed since it's a commercial property.
Yes, agreed.
And I, I'm sorry for the interruptions, but that, I'll, I'll try and keep quiet now. I'll try.
Thank you, Mrs. Smiralda. Ms. Caffrey, do you have any questions for Mr. Drumel?
Uh, no questions at this time. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Caffrey. Mr. Hesh, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hesh. Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions for Mr. Drumel on his testimony?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hazel. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Drumel on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified. Do any members of the public have any questions for Mr. Drumel on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
Yes, we have somebody named The Four Oranges. Please state your name and address for the record. Hello?
Hi, my name is, uh, Darren Tobia. My address is twenty-four Columbia Street.
Go right ahead, Mr. Tobia.
Um, I just wanted to ask one more time why, uh, the architect cannot accommodate a pedestrian path from the street to the, to the site proposed?
Uh, so that, that's probably more of a, a question for the civil engineer.
I think our, our civil engineer testified, one, one, there's currently not one existing today. Uh, and two, it, it, it's quite common for shopping centers, you know, not having an access or a sidewalk leading entirely to, uh, the building. Um, with respect to, uh, with, with respect to the concerns, you know, we put up signage and striping for, uh, you know, traffic calming measures. Um, I know Mr. Klein, uh, mentions the, uh, uh, potentially putting in, uh, losing one space which would potentially require a variance for the, 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 if the the turnout to be a fitness center and the fitness center requires a hundred and seventy spaces, that would be a variance. Um, maybe applicant would be, if it was the board's desire, I think our preference would be to have the parking spaces, but if it was board's desire to have um, you know, an additional calming measure where we lose one space and, uh, install an island in the one space, uh, next to, I think, I, I believe Mr. Klein was saying a crossroad of those space would be amenable to do that. That was a board's desire.
So it's, it's not cost, is it? It's not.
No, it's not cost. We, we would, there's no room. If, if we would have to move, you know, you would need the space in order to put in the sidewalk and then the drive aisle would get too small and then we would need relief for having the drive aisle too small or, and or lose parking spaces.
I, I, I'm going to try to phrase this in the, in the question, um, why don't you want to make the lake, which is one of our township's, um, nicest and most, and historic resources? Why don't you want to incorporate it into the design?
Again, we're not, i- i- it sounds like people are already using because no one's using, you know, the property is currently vacant or at least not occupied. People are already using parking spaces. We're not precluding any current means of people to access the lake. Uh, what we're saying too is though we don't, we don't actually connect to the lake. There is a lot between us and the lake. Um, as well. So they, they would, they would be crossing our lot to go through another lot to get to the lake. I don't think we're precluding it. We're, what we're proposing doesn't further inhibit any access to the lake than what currently is there.
Do you consider this, uh, lakefront property?
Uh, I don't know, I, what you mean by lakefront property. Where this is not like a residential, you know, people are going to be sitting out on their deck looking out over the lake.
But why not? Why not?
Cause it's a commercial building.
Okay. Can someone in the commercial building enjoy the lake? And the view of it?
If there, nothing precludes them from going out of the building, walking across the lot and, and just as people do today.
Okay. Do you have any other questions, sir?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the public have any questions for Mr. Drumel on his testimony? Please raise your hand and be identified.
I'm not seeing any.
Seeing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Drumel.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further witnesses, uh, to present in support of the application. Um, unless there's any further questions, uh, of me from the board, uh, I'm happy to start, give a little brief summation.
Okay, go for it. Then we'll, then we'll have questions after your summation.
Sure. So, you know, again, you know, chairman, members of the board appreciate the time this evening. Um, and, you know, it is a, uh, interesting property and kind of with a history of, obviously with the bowling, uh, alley as well as we've mentioned with people using it, you know, for parking for access. So you know, obviously the, the applicant was trying to do his best to, um, keep what was there with respect to the building, not do anything crazy, not add any improvements or expand it in any way. It's kind of working with what you have, but at the same time giving it a major facelift, uh, and enhancing it from both an architectural perspective as well as from, uh, uh, the, the parking and site circulation layout and just from a functionality standpoint, uh, just making it a cleaner uh, operation as well as a cleaner look, um, with the new paving. You know, from the variance perspective, uh, again, there's an existing nonconformity of eighty-six point six percent where sixty percent is or maximum sixty percent is permitted, but we're actually reducing it to eighty-two point one percent. Uh, the existing parking spaces in the front yard, again, where it currently exists today and we're actually presenting it as a better, uh, circulation alternative than what exists. The loading space, uh, we're requesting the waiver or, uh, and or the variance however you design it based upon the fact that certain uses, and we don't know the tenant yet, may not require, uh, a loading space and even some unit, uh, uses that could require a loading space under the ordinance, uh, the actual operation may not needed. As I noted, to the extent that there, uh, and so we would request a waiver or relief with respect to that. To the extent, uh, future tenant requires a loading space and we have to adjust parking and they have to remove parking space for that. Um, and they would choose where that loading space would be. They would come back to the board to identify that. Um, and then I believe there is also the, the waiver as well. So similar to the last application, uh, under the Berbridge uh, standard of enhancing and beautifying, you know, kind of a rundown property, uh, in this case a vacant property as well. Uh, we believe it meets a criteria for a C two variance where the purposes of the missed milland use law are being advanced by the deviations. Uh, a, a lot of them are already existing and we're beautifying and making it, uh, the, the property and making it, uh, more functional. And that the variance can be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good and that those benefits, uh, outweigh any, any detriments. Um, so for that, we'd ask that the board act in favor of the application. And as, as I did note too, in my, uh, uh, comments, one member of the public with Mr. Klein's comment, uh, if the board was as a whole, um, in favor of removing one space and granting a variance to the extent one would need it, if it, if it turned out to be a fitness center, uh, we would add another, uh, parking island, uh, in one of those spaces to kind of be across from another to further act as a traffic calming measure.
Mr. Klein, I, I'm sorry, are you done, sir?
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
So the hundred and seventy parking spaces is the calculation for if this whole square footage was a gym, a fitness center?
Correct.
Can you give me the next possible tenant that it could be and what that parking calculation would be?
Uh, that I do not have.
Well, that, that's what my confusion was when I first saw this application. I didn't know what it was for. And how can you calculate something if you don't know what it is yet? So wait, okay. So wait, so retail store, oh, is, is one per two fifty. So you've got a a lot of leeway if it ends up being, being retail stores or personal services as opposed to recreational fitness, which is one per one fifty. So, yeah, come on, one parking space? I don't must be willing to get rid of those fourteen in the back that are compact that look like they're just going to get in the way, but uh, you gotta.
Yeah, but again, I, I, I think we're dealing with a, a, a minimum parking requirement. Uh, there's no set, you know, on the max, obviously from a tenancy standpoint.
Talking about one parking spot. I'm talking about one parking spot. Instead of three in the front along the fast track, make it four. You're arguing about one parking spot?
I thought, I, I, I thought I said we, we would agree to remove one parking spot and put in an island. Yeah, I, I said we would agree.
All right, all right. So the only, the only reason why you need one seventy is for fitness. If somebody comes in with retail, would you be willing to get rid of some other parking spaces?
That's really going to be on a tenant basis. They, a tenant may want that parking.
Maybe you can make them employee parking then in the back, because they have their own entrance in the back there. The angled spot.
That would, that could make sense.
Okay. All right.
A condition?
We're going to get the fourth little landscaped island? That's what we're going to get out of it? And they're going to line up with each other?
It would, it would line up. Yeah, we'd be happy, our engineer would work with your engineer to pick, unless the board has particular preference, which island, uh, you, you'd like.
Probably, probably something in the middle so they don't have a raceway.
No, 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 no. Hold, hold on, hold on. Can I share my screen or you guys? I already have it in front of me.
Go for, go for it.
Please, cause this, make it, make it.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, thank you. So I'm talking about, these two down here have to be here because there's a utility pole, improved light pole, improved light pole. I'm saying this one doesn't.
I, I, I can't see your cursor.
Lee, can you go up to view options and you annotate or something?
Hey, Lee, we can see it now.
Right, now you can, because I got kicked out for a second. Yes, sorry. So this one is sort of a random location. I'm saying, let's line up one. One, and I'm choppy. There's something wrong with my, let me shut this off.
So basically the first island that, that comes in.
Yeah, and that, and then put one here. And then instead of speed humps, which you don't like to plow over, you put this island.
I think we lost, uh.
And now he.
Klein over, not Mr. Klein.
No, he muted himself. Lee, you're muted.
Cause I got kicked out. I got, just got brought back in. So I have to share my screen again.
I, I understand though.
Yeah, I'm thinking we need, we need two pair. We need a pair across from each other where this one utility pole is. Can you see my screen yet?
Yes, yes, we got it.
So that, that one there, instead of a speed hump. And then instead of this one that's sort of in a random spot, let's put another one across from here. And, you know, if you plant it right and you, you landscape it and all that, it might look a little tighter there. So people might go a little slower. It's either that or a couple of speed tables or speed humps. Up to them.
And Lee, are you suggesting that you, if you were to do that, then you don't also add striping or signage or?
Oh, no, you could do, yeah, you could do all that. Yeah, you definitely want it. You could put some signs up, you know. I, I, again, I don't know how many people are going to walk to here from Eagle Rock. They might. It depends, but uh, you know, i- i- they don't have enough width to get a sidewalk and we admit that.
Well, the idea, it's the next best thing to promote pedestrian safety.
Correct. Yeah, to slow down people as they come in here. Cause you're right, I've been in here and I, you tend to go fast here. Correct, yeah, to slow down people as they come in here. Cause you're right, I've been in here and I tend to go fast here. And now you don't have people coming back and forth across from the other property. So it's really.
Just wanted to make it clear that we can do it all.
Are you, was that John?
Yeah, you could do it all if you if you had the inkling.
Yeah, yeah, you could do speed humps and you could do the 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 landscape, the islands, and you could do some signs. Sure, sure.
I think from from our stand, from an operational standpoint, I don't think the speed humps.
Yeah, I I meant all minus the speed humps. If the speed humps are prohibited, then then you know, striping signage plus lining up the uh the the
The islands.
The islands there.
I just have one question with the signage. I understood it to be painted on the ground that you didn't want posted signs um or do you?
I'm not sure even what kind of sign.
Yes, I mean, you know, I I understand the purpose of signs, but at the same time, you know, sign, signs everywhere, signs, you know.
Exactly.
Place.
See, I I think the only place a sign, I what I thought I was hearing was the sign caution pedestrians would be painted on the pavement along with some bright striping, but you tell me.
Whatever I I would prefer the uh the striping and and painting. But I I meant it to be whatever works best for the uh the applicant.
Okay.
Diana, if I can interject, the complete street show that a lot of our testing signage on the pavement works just as significantly as opposed to time.
All right.
They just have to maintain it, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, and the the planted, the plantings will be maintained in perpetuity. If they die, they're gonna get fixed. They'll replace.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would just highlight too, you know, it's it's not really shown on these plans. But when you pull into the building or when you pull into from the entrance way, no, I'm sorry, from the entrance way. You know, there is grassed area. I mean, those are effectively islands as well um that are grass and one has a sign and then the whole eastern property line has landscaping uh along it as well. So it's not really shown on the plan because someone is probably not even on our property um or within the right of way uh. But those are almost effectively islands as well when you come in from a landscaping standpoint.
Okay.
Okay, um Mister Hess, they're requesting from your letter uh number four a waiver for the uh um uh a curbing along the perimeter.
Yeah, I think their testimony is that because of the existing grades.
Right, the drainage.
It wouldn't and the drainage, it just wouldn't work. So I have no objection to that.
Okay, so number four, we we will, unless a member of the board has a a problem, I I recommend we uh agree to the waiver for item number four. Uh code twenty five dash twelve dot one B township code for the entire perimeter of the parking lot will be curbed. Uh uh and I just wanna make sure that we get everything down. That we talked about. Miss McGovern, do you have any other waivers or?
No, the conditions were stripe the stem area and paint warning slower caution pedestrians and maintain that painting. Do not impinge on current access to lake. Uh give up one parking space to line up the traffic islands.
Now we're doing two.
Yeah, give up one parking space to have four islands all together to line up across from each other. Um and maintain the plants in those islands. And then what I don't know how I'm gonna how you want this phrased, an AED installed in all the tenant areas or just uh how how do you want that phrased?
Each tenant, each tenant should have one.
Okay. Okay, and that was it.
Well, the other one too, I I just wanna make sure too that once they redesigned the 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 stamp pipe sprinkler systems that, you know, consideration to the a parking spot may need to be removed or relocated because they're gonna they're looking to to move that that um current stamp pipe access.
Okay, so if stamp pipe requires removal of a parking space variance uh it would be permitted or permitted by variance?
It would, it would, I I don't know how we would do it, but it's just that if it if it's if it's already in a spot that's that that is pre-designated. And then, you know, we just it's basically swapping it out. So this way it's, we're not blocking it. It it can't be blocked.
I'm just gonna write it. It'll be permitted. Okay.
Free free of obstruction or whatever you want to call it.
Okay, I would also reckon that Miss McGovern, if if the fire department recommends it be moved and they lose a parking space, they don't have to come back to the plan.
Okay, okay. And does not need to remember.
Right, and we we will add that to an existing uh variance or parking spaces.
Okay.
The other thing was loading dock. Uh I would put something in that uh at this time, we'll give them a waiver on the loading dock. However, if a one of the ten, one or both of the tenants uh that they went to require it, they'd have to come back to the planning. That would require them to come back to the plan.
How about if they end up with retail stores and they only need a hundred and two parking spaces? That they throw a little more landscaping islands in there?
Then again, again, that that's a minimum parking requirement. It all that says you have to have a minimum amount of that. If you have a retail, tenants are gonna want the parking.
Okay.
We're not gonna want the spaces out by Eagle Rock Avenue, but okay, all right.
We can't have that. We're trying. Um so Miss McGovern, we added the uh the waiver.
Waiver on the loading dock unless a tenant in the future uh requires it and then would have to return to the board.
Are you guys gonna put in an emergency standby generator? And there's a a hush falls over the crowd.
I I this is Matthew Drumel, the architect. I I I would say no unless the tenant required one.
Okay. Fair enough. Well, I would say.
If you get if if Chairman, I just ask if you give me a minute, just I would like to consult my client and just confirm uh as to those conditions and and before I agree to all of them.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Chairman, while they are conferring. Um.
Air, yes.
So this application is so nebulous since there isn't really a an applicant using the site. Um are you suggesting or did you just suggest that they would have to come back to zoning or planning? When someone is interested in the site?
No. If if it falls, if it falls within what is permitted in the zone, no. If it's not permitted in the zone, they'd go to the uh zoning board.
Okay.
For variance. If they need, if they need a loading dock, then they would have to come back. But if the fire department requests mu- lo- losing one spot for safety, they wouldn't. So there's a would, I'm trying to create a balance.
And if a fitness center happened to be proposed.
Right, then they'd be like short two spots, one for the extra island and one potentially for the standpipe.
Right. Not a problem. We wanna work with you guys.
And I confirmed we're agreeable uh to those conditions.
Okay, fantastic. So I would also, I I'd ask the board to consider this. If there is a foods, if there was a restaurant or food store that they do have an emergency standby generator uh to with that with that establishment. And the board can discuss that. A a food store or a restaurant uh should have an emergency standby generator.
Yeah, agreed.
I'm just throwing it out there. I'm not saying you have to.
Yeah, I don't uh I it's hard to speak for a tenant.
Yeah, to to the extent, yeah, I'm sorry, I I think to the extent that the use through the building code required one, it would have it. Or if the tenant had a desire to have it, they would have it, but if it's not a code requirement, I don't think our client would would wanna do that, but he'd have to see when when the tenants come.
Mm-hmm.
I'm asking the board what their mind is, so board, the board can uh say yes or say no um.
Well, I have a different perspective on that. Where would it go? Would it would it create a different issue, like in terms of a variance or something?
What kind of variance would it create?
I don't know. Is it gonna take up another parking space? Where's it gonna go? It's not gonna go on the roof, right? It it could go.
Could go anywhere.
Have a tight, you have a tight back back of the building there might screw up the drive aisle there. I don't know where it would go. That's the only thing.
I think again, I I think we're looking at a more tenant driven. If 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 it's something they want and wanna come back to the board and show a removed parking spot.
Okay. That's that's exactly what I, that's exactly what I'm suggesting is you you can't anticipate everything. That might be one of those things where they have to come back.
Fair enough. Okay.
That was my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the members of the board have any suggestions, questions?
Uh I just asked uh if Miss McGovern could th- there's the condition, I think she said do not further inhibit existing access to Crystal Lake.
Well, yes, because there was, there was Dr. Bagloff made a suggestion of planting trees there and then Ms. Caffer.
Leave it alone.
Ms. Caffer said no, that you know, we don't wanna do anything to impinge. So that area there, you're not putting up a fence, you're not putting up bushes.
Fence, correct. We're not, we're not.
So you're to I I thought that the board wanted a condition to not do anything to prohibit uh access to the lake as it currently exists.
From what from what the testimony is, he they, this applicant cannot give permission to go there because they said that there is another lot.
I understand that, but it would be not not giving, not prohibiting access to the lot, which then takes you to the to the lake. I guess that would be the.
Yeah, I and if I, my my main purpose of asking is that I just kinda wanted to be clear. I don't want that condition to be viewed as consent for you know, a people to use the parking for access to Crystal Lake. People may do it and so be it if there's parking available, but I just don't want it to be like we we have to provide this.
No, no, there is no condition with leaving it alone.
Okay, then I'll take that out.
Yep.
But but if it was a, if you sold, if the store sold inline skates, I'd go put my inline skates on that I bought at your store and go skate around the lake. It it could be compatible, it would be nice compatible use.
No, no, yeah, I'm not, I'm not. Yeah, but my main point was I I didn't want something that could be viewed as allowing.
Like an easement. Yeah, they don't wanna, yeah.
People to come on.
So I'll take it out. Okay.
I would take that out. Let's not confuse the issue.
Yep.
There's a sign up now that says you can't, you only people that belong to the bowling alley can park there.
Okay.
I could get back there somehow. I could walk through this parking lot and get on to the lake.
Okay, are we uh are we all of one mind? Well, we'll find that in a minute. So I I make a motion that we approve PB twenty four dash oh three Crystal Lake. Eagle Rock, the Eagle LLC, Crystal, sorry, let's try this one more time. PB twenty four dash oh three Crystal Eagle LLC um and the C two variance without substantial detriment detriment to the public good and without a substantial impairment to intent and the purpose. I'm sorry. And the zoning ordinances, it will improve a I hear people. Uh it will improve a non uh working building. It will upgrade the parking lot, increase the value of the uh establishment to the township and make it serviceable um fulfilling all the requirements of uh the master plan. Do I have a second?
Second, Mister Chairman.
Oh, somebody picked, raised their hand? Uh, Kadoza, you win. Second, on the motion, you have a let.
Mister Albert?
Yes.
Mister Klein?
Yes.
Mrs. Murado?
Yes.
Mister Wooks?
Yes.
Mister Kadoza?
Yes.
Miss Caffer?
Yes.
Mayor McCartney?
Yes.
Mister Waino?
Yes.
Chairman Bagoff.
And for the record, this motion was with the conditions aforementioned, and the answer is yes. Motion carries. Thank you all very much.
Great. Thank you, Board Chairman. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. So we will take a four minute break. Does anybody need a bio break? If you do four minutes? No, anybody need one?
What are we doing? I thought the next one got carried to June fifth.
Oh, did the next one get carried?
Yeah, I said did. You have to announce that, though. You have to say.
Yeah, that's what you're gonna say.
Sorry, I didn't see it on my, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
That's okay. Even better. Oh, I'm so psyched.
Eyes are above the nose on this stuff.
We're we're almost there. We're almost there. Uh PB twenty four dash oh two Wonder Group Incorporated block one three two dot oh one lot fourteen forty five dot oh one zone B two four eighty one Eagle Rock Avenue is now carried to the June Planning Board, June fifth Planning Board Regular Meeting. Uh Miss McGovern, you have some things to say to the board.
One minute.
One minute.
Swear. There was a case that came out of Sparta where eight out of nine planning board members were disqualified from an application involving warehouses because they joined or participated in a Facebook group um that was against warehouses in general. So the the judge kicked them off and then they had to draft people from the zoning board. I just want to remind all the board members to be very careful when using uh social media because people do check on it and you could be ending up uh disqualified. You should also, of course, not talk about any application that's pending. Um again, because it's perceived as if you've already prejudged something. So that's all I have to say for this evening.
Okay, so to the planning.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you for that. I wanted to say my force field has been up since I got elected, so thank you for that.
I gotta update my MySpace account.
We have, we have, we have a number of issues that your friends and neighbors may comment about. And uh also, public comment at a meeting or with a group of friends is just as problematic because somebody can say, well, Mister so and so and Miss so and so said at a meeting with friends or whatever. So you just have to be careful uh about getting involved in any of these things. The best thing to say is we haven't reviewed this yet. There's a lot of information to be had. We're gonna make a decision based on the facts, the ordinances and the law.
Thank you.
So that is pretty much everything I got. Um. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt. We have a member of the public for oranges has his hand raised.
Okay.
You want. Okay. Please state your name and address. Please state your name and address for the record. Sorry. Yeah.
Did I miss the the opportunity to uh to speak on the 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 previous proposal? I thought there was supposed to be um some time for the public to make a comment on it?
And Miss McGovern, I think I missed that public comment. No, you know what? I asked, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, you did. So I guess you misinterpreted it, Miss uh Sir, so.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Excuse me, I I would like to object to that because um this is not the portion to ask questions. This is the portion to make comments and there's a difference.
Okay, um I have no problem from to make a to make a comment.
You can open the record and he can make a, you can make a comment.
Yes, go right ahead. We're gonna reopen the record and you can make a comment.
I I I have to just uh reiterate that um the lack of pedestrian access is is really ill conceived because the danger to pedestrians is not the speed, is not always the speed of a car. It is the visibility of a car. And nowadays, we have larger and larger cars with larger and larger hoods, which makes it even more uh difficult to see pedestrians when they're in front of a vehicle. Um simply having uh speed humps to to make cars traveling slower is uh is a concern and I'm surprised it's not being taken more seriously. I'm surprised the our new planner, our newly hired planner hasn't made a single comment about pedestrian safety or hasn't made a si- single comment about anything. I mean, I I I think this was a good opportunity for him to uh state his vision for what he wants the township to be, what the township to look like. Um and I I I guess it's too late because the vote was already taken, but um I I hope in the future we can take uh pedestrian safety more seriously. That's all. Thank you, Board.
Thank you very much for your comment. We we definitely appreciate that. Okay, uh having said that, the next regular planning board meeting will be Wednesday, June fifth, twenty twenty four at seven thirty PM via Zoom. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move, Mister Chairman.
Second, I second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Say nay. Oh, the eyes are above the nose. Thank you all very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Nice.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, Chairman.